June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, happy Flag Day, everyone. Um, open meetings act posted on the east wall, call the regular meeting of the city of Plainview Council meeting to order. Roll call Bob, Pam, Tyler, Brian, all present in quorum, uh, number, sorry, as you're able, please rise for the plaid.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have two approval of minutes from previous meeting, regular meeting Monday, May sixteenth, twenty twenty-two.
I approve the minutes.
All in favor say aye, Tyler, Brian, Pam, Bob, motion carries, I have three claims and payroll.
I approve most of those three claims and payroll.
Bob, Pam, Tyler, Brian, motion carries, number four, reports the manor, Julian?
Um, I come tonight with a couple of different things, uh, any questions regarding the last meeting, we're just kinda continuing on with the coronavirus, I don't think it will ever end for our facility, still wearing masks. Uh, still testing based on, uh, the colors that we have last week, uh, Pierce County is orange, that means all the staff that are not now boosted also have to be tested twice a week. Uh, very fortunate though, we are still, um, don't have any total cases in the facility, so we're happy about that. Uh, we continue to look on hiring people and then of course if we're hiring, some individuals are choosing not to be, um, vaccinated, so then we have to go ahead and work on a medical or a religious exemption with the board's approval there. Uh, we are looking for seriously some CNAs, um, at the first week of August, I might even need about eight CNAs due to, uh, college kids going back, high school kids going back, they've saved us through the summer. Uh, but we are in definite need of some CNAs there. On your agenda, you will see that discussion of sales tax requests, uh, the last several years, our survey process, the fire marshal has made comments to me in regards to our hood. What I can find back is that hood is original from probably like nineteen sixty-eight, um, and of course it has met its limitations on the allowances according to the current fire code. I consider that it, it doesn't have welded seams, I also say it has copper bits, um, that keep it together, type thing a year ago, that's how it was made. That is not a sealed, um, environment anymore according to the fire marshal. Um, so the last several years, I looked, what are we gonna do about it, and now it's just about its time, um, to do it. Of course, I've had two different bids looked at, um, I started back in March of doing, uh, demand fire and safety, give me some rough numbers, um, and they did give me some rough numbers, but I asked them to come out. Um, they have a cleaning crew that comes out every six months and does our cleaning, but the guy that does the bids and estimates, please come out and physically look at it because what you think and what sizing and we need black and white numbers. We also understand bids change a little bit, the black and whites, uh, he did not come out, I, the board gave him another month to come out after the meeting in April. Um, and then I told him I needed advice certain day in May, so I would have plenty of time, he did not come out again. I went ahead and called him the day of the meeting and he said, well, I'll get up there next week or two, and I said, I gave you a whole extra month, so you only have one bid. Um, I did talk to the fire marshal, there is a company up in Yankton that kinda did some, but we highly did not recommend them, and so I take that from our fire marshal. So, in your bid, you have Heartland, um, fire protection, um, this is a very expensive piece of equipment that we hope we never have to use, but it is going to be a little bit larger than what we have. Based on over the years, uh, replacing the oven, um, is a little larger than maybe a nineteen sixty-eight, so to get proper coverage, um, you'll see that it's thirty-five thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars. But you will see on the next page that there's cool to make up air enough to ten thousand nine hundred dollars, and they highly suggest that we need that part of it. Uh, what will happen is otherwise in the summertime, all this hot air is just gonna keep coming into the kitchen, which is fully air conditioned twenty-four seven, but it won't keep up. In the winter times, that cool air would also just be coming in, uh, not as big of a deal, but to how it is running now, we don't have any fresh air that's ever coming in, so it wasn't designed that way. So your total bid for that is forty-six thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars. And I'm asking you to use the city sales tax for that and see how this is a big piece of purchase equipment, I said again, hope we never have to use it. Your other bid at the time was not, like I said, fully, fully black and white, was forty-three thousand five hundred and forty-eight seventy-seven, so you can see pretty close bid and they went, choose to come out. I am looking at, um, once they get this new installed, looking at a different cleaning company, uh, the cleaning company that comes to Mary's and CHI, uh, hits my timing just perfectly. Um, and maybe look at a different cleaning company also, 'cause I often think I have to remind against fire and safety that it due for inspections and due for this, but it has to be cleaned every six months.
For what it for, Julian mentioned that air intake system that needs heated and cooled, when we worked with the Legion Club to get the, the remodel of Mary's, Joey could speak to this perhaps better than I. But early on, they discovered the new high volume units, they suck all your doors shut, you gotta have outside air coming, and if you have outside air coming either in the summer or the winter, it's not the right temperature. It's, it's an amazing problem to have, but they have to treat that coming in, either heat it or cool it, or it's really uncomfortable in the kitchen.
I didn't ask if it's something I could add on in a year or two years, you know, and he said, I'm not saying you can't, but what we put in now, you know, the fan that we have and built for this system, I'll say it's gonna cost five thousand dollars. He said, you might just waste that five thousand dollars in a year because you need to put this cooling system on and we need, you know, a different fan to make it work and, and things like that. So he really knows that it's a big added purchase to it, but it is really necessary. I can tell you, these guys have been, he called me this morning again, he extended his, uh, bid by a few days to be able to meet the board meeting and the city council meeting, um, so they have been on top of it and really have, um, came out, measured, did everything they needed to.
The finances are there, and we actually pledged pretty close to spend that out of the way this year, so.
So it would be forty-eight, eight sixteen plus?
Forty-six, eight sixteen is what I got here.
It would be plus that cold air?
No, that is what it's colder. The first page would be thirty-five, nine sixteen, and then I added the ten-nine, which becomes forty-six, eight sixteen.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the bid for the manor's, uh, new, uh, fire good for the kitchen.
Second?
I'll stay in that motion.
Um, all in favor of, uh, spending forty-six thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars in city sales tax for the new fire good for the manor, Brian, Bob, Pam, Tyler, motion carries. Next up is the training mannequin.
Um, we have, obviously, like every, the facility struggles with CNAs, um, and getting them, uh, the governor had allowed a temporary eight-hour CNA class to be done online, then we had skills that were done in-house, and then, uh, they go ahead and they test out. We probably had five CNAs that did that here in the last several months. Um, it is oftentimes difficult to do some of the training skills on live residents, some of those skills are uncomfortable skills that when you're a fresh new CNA and trying to learn those. Um, there is a possibility, uh, Pam is willing to work through our association and teach the CNA class, which is oftentimes, uh, in other schools like One Holdin' Hardington share an instructor and they help, hold it in the class and the kids can get, um, education through that. Um, I have found a mannequin that would also do some training for our nurses when we're working with IVs and working with wounds, um, it's in your packet, it's just six hu- not just, but six hundred and fifty-two dollars and twenty-one cents per unit. I found there's a lot of different mannequins, if I go through our health magazines, they range from almost fifteen hundred dollars to three thousand, we didn't quite need that. This mannequin would, could also be used, um, I would say the EMTs, the fire department, I've worked with the school, you know, it would be available to be used throughout the community for different training features. And, you know, we would hope to be able to start teaching CNA classes and be able to generate some more employment that every nursing home is under pressure right now on.
Actually, I said before, we, we can't spend our money on that one, no, and I told you in that too just tonight, but, so the sales taxes for capital expenditures on the building only, so, but luckily it's still seven hundred bucks, which is seven hundred bucks, so, and we'll be able to go through our funds.
But they should have the money in their budget to, right?
Yeah.
What's that, I didn't know that until?
Yeah, that was, that was on, yep.
Any other questions for doing? Thank you. Or did you wanna remind about?
Oh, yeah, thanks, Brent, um, our, um, upcoming, uh, event at the hospital, Foundation, P A H S Foundation, and the Manor Foundation has done this, I think this is either three or four, um, is scheduled for Wednesday, June twenty-ninth. Um, and it'll be held on the backside of the manor, uh, for our residents to be able to enjoy, but when you come, you can, um, support the free will donations for hot dogs, hamburgers, baked beans, chips, bottled water, root beer floats. But we also wanna make sure the community realizes that it's not just a meal, you are getting entertainment, um, Mark Newman is gonna be playing for us this year, we do, you know, pay him, and then fireworks, as you all know, just aren't cheap, I mean, you don't get much for a little bit of thing. So, uh, we encourage you to come up and, and enjoy the night, um, and just, we can start shooting off about nine o'clock, we're not late goers, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Please report. Good evening.
Well, hello, um, busy month, last month, I will let you all know that traffic stops are up a little bit, um, thefts are going up, cars have been broken into, change, one wallet was stolen, and it's been mostly on the north side of town. So, just tell your neighbors to keep their cars locked, take their valuables in the house, I mean, we shouldn't have to tell you all that, but it sure makes our job easier if you're doing that, so. Um, something else I wanted to kinda bring out after just routine control, it's not on the agenda, I'd like to bring up something that, not, it's not necessarily a problem, but I'd like to have a solution for something that I'm gonna suggest, and I feel like we have entirely too many stop signs in this town. To, as of right now, I have counted a hundred and forty-eight, and a lot of the, the majority of them are right along Pilcher, Woodland, I understand west, there's a couple of stop signs out there that we definitely need. Um, it's all, this is all in the beginning, so I, I really don't know how to, like, go about, go town and, go, go through town and figure out which ones are absolutely gonna be, that are necessary, which ones are not. I mean, I understand the purpose of them, but why eighty stop signs in a six-block radius, I don't understand that. Highway twenty, definitely, locust, absolutely a few around the high school, but, um, I'm gonna go out there and drive around and look and see which ones I think are absolutely detrimental, and which ones I think are just kind of a nuisance. So, that's kinda what I'm working on now, if you guys have any questions, feel free to, I mean, I don't know what thoughts are on that.
I know that's when we still met downtown, it was a previous city superintendent, and he felt that they needed to be four-way stops around all the schools and the parks.
No, there's more than just the four, four ways, you know, the few around the schools, but, I mean, I get it, you gotta stop at stops, I understand that, but most of my stops, uh, my traffic stops for vehicles running stop signs have been on highway twenty. It's not been on the north side of town, I think people are pretty observant when it, and, and Dr. Earl has that new pickup drop-off procedure, and that's probably eliminated a lot of the problems with the stop, vehicles not stopping. But that's something I'm gonna be looking into, and I'll, you know, maybe get it on the agenda later on, so we can kinda fix a little bit of stop signs, 'cause they are kind of a nuisance, especially for routine patrol, stop, go, stop, go, stop.
Would not a lot of them do well with a yield sign?
I think a yield would be okay in some of those situations, absolutely, that's something I can look at, too.
A good part of it, before you were here, of course, but a good part of it was the school's request right around the school, slow down the people's stop sign to do that, they were having trouble just policing the speed, and they came asking for stop signs. You probably oughta bring this to Earl's attention, too, if you're gonna work on it.
Mm-hmm. Let's see how that goes. Well, I don't have anything else, if anybody has any questions for me, I mean.
Non-licensed vehicles, are we watching them?
Yeah, the best that we can, yeah, I mean, um, not making excuses, but I think the thefts are going up because of gas prices, so people are running short on money, you know, licensing the, the vehicles is a problem, but, I mean, they're not driving them 'cause they're not licensed, they probably don't have money to get gas, but yeah, I mean, it's been pretty, I honestly haven't seen a whole lot. I kinda have an idea of maybe where you might be thinking, but, I mean, that's gonna be a battle we're always gonna fight, I think, you know?
Yes, ma'am, we will all go around the cemetery, make sure they don't steal my hoses, please.
Your wife?
Garden hoses, I don't know. I have to worry about the flowers, I don't know, I mean, I don't own hoses, but, alright, so.
Hey, Kristy, has Jerry by chance mentioned if, uh, nuisance property lawyer has made any contact with us or anything's going on?
I have, honest, I hate to say this, but I just don't know, I'm kinda outside of that mood, but.
I emailed Luke, too, and I haven't heard back from him, so I don't know what's, he had a baby, so I don't know, like, last month they just had babies, so I don't know, I've emailed him a couple of times on things and I've heard nothing from him, so, he may not be in the office, I don't know, so.
Uh, yeah.
Okay. Talking with Mark, uh, from what I understand, too, he's thinking if he gets the baby thing stabilized, it's their hope to move to Pierce, which wouldn't hurt. I think his wife perhaps teaches in Pierce, I don't know if we know that or not, but they might come a little closer, that would help here a little bit, perhaps, be easier to just go see him instead of sending stuff, get a little quicker activity.
Sorry, I don't have an answer for you.
That's fine, yeah, I just want to differentiate the conversation.
Thank you. I have a number five, public hearing at six forty-five PM, proposed ordinance to update and amend city code and zoning regulations pertaining to municipal planning in small box discount stores.
Brian, pause for a moment, let me get in a comment here before you fully open your hearing, sir. We had correspondence just yesterday from the opposition, Lopez in Omaha. We, we, we had the meeting with the zoning board, they went ahead to recommend the amendment the way Mark had suggested, and I agreed with him. But now Lopez has, they're apparently watching the internet and pulling all this stuff down whenever, whenever something hits the agenda. So, he wrote a half-page letter, but the essence is, if the city would like to reach some sort of global resolution on both the ordinance and the litigation, the appropriate cause, of course, is to discuss those terms as opposed to embarking unilaterally on new amendments. I think he's getting tired of changing his documents to deal with the amendments that have been done, but he's made a viable offer to discuss it. Mark thinks it would look bad with the district court if we told him to go take a flying leap, and that, uh, that it would be good to demonstrate to the district court that we have tried to talk if there's something to talk about. So it's Mark's request, and I think I would join in it, that this, both of these topics be continued for a month. I mean, there's some risk there, perhaps they intend to do something in the intervening period, but I doubt it, and they do say they'd like to talk. He still seems, through the gist of his rest of his email, to be a little overly optimistic about their status, but it can't hardly be bad to talk to them if they're asking to talk. So, considering the possibility of table in this for the month, both the hearing and the, the vote, I think that would be well done. I can try and answer questions if you have them.
Bruce, they did this once before, asked to talk, and then slapped us a federal lawsuit before the talk could happen, if we do recall.
Well, we're there now.
I know, but.
But if the lawyer for the insurance company is paying ninety percent of our divorce, our litigation, divorce bill, uh, has talked to his insurance agent, and the insurance agent wants him to cooperate and talk and try and get this settled, it's pretty hard for us to tell them, them, too, to go fly. Both the insurance company and the opposition, as I say, it's not without risk, but I think he's making a legitimate request to discuss it. I have a sneaking suspicion he's gonna come back and ask for some kind of a we-win guarantee, which may or may not happen, but it doesn't hurt to see what he's got to say.
Are they talking about talking to Mark, the lawyer, or to the council, or what?
Pardon me?
Are they talking about talking to Mark, the lawyer, or the council?
Well, either way, I mean, if there's something to discuss with the council, I think they would consider coming to the hearing about an amendment and state their position, uh, maybe, given the opportunity. But they'd like to have a chance to see the amendment and comment on the details, and see if they can negotiate anything, I'm sure, more favorable to themselves. But they still take the position the city has discretion here, and they don't get to have an ordinance that says they win, but you guys have ultimately gotta decide that. They might come next month if it comes to that. Now, obviously, right now, he doesn't even know if you're willing to continue it, you wanna just pass it and go on your way, you have that right, I told him, Mark and I had agreed, we would ask, that's all he got, he didn't get any problems.
Does the council wish to open the public hearing or table for one month?
I think we can move for the table for one month.
Second? All in favor, Bob, Tyler, Pam, Brian, motion will be, or, sorry, public hearing will be table for one month, so I have a number five and six, okay, back to economic development report.
Hello?
Aye.
Okay, we're not gonna talk about the housing project too much because that's item number fourteen on your agenda, but the DED did finally get back to us, five months later, about a proposal to the funded budget. Um, on the downtown revitalization, we do continue to still have issues with NINAD, um, on the drought downs and getting reimbursements and getting payments, the contractors have not been very happy with that process. But you can start to see some of the results of that DTR round one coming through, um, the Frontier Insurance, Plague and Telephone Company, you can see the new concrete in front of all of those, um, carpet repair and materials grocery store both have new roofs, can't see those, but they're there. Um, windows and doors, Priority Family Medicine is a complete project, Pure Revival's complete, Plague News, uh, has new windows, and the other businesses are just kinda waiting, things have been ordered, they're just waiting for contractors or some more supplies to come in. So, this summer should be a pretty busy one for DTR, and we are working on opening round two, um, on the Plainview Resit Committee Fund Park project, um, so the park, the project is now fully funded, and, um, all of the information has been passed on to Jeremy, so it's now up to Jeremy to order the materials and see when that project can start. Hopefully, um, work on that this summer or this fall. On the community building, the donations are still coming in for this project, this month alone, we've received a hundred thousand dollars, um, so the steering committee, I'm gonna be pulling you guys together in the next couple of weeks, we do need to meet and formalize a targeted, uh, fundraising campaign and discuss some more particulars for that project. There are, um, a number of corporate entities and utilities in the area that are asking us to apply for their grants, um, they're willing to do challenge matches, so we really need to start formalizing that process. Um, something new, we're gonna be, we're beginning to work with a organization called Community for Kids, or C four K, you're gonna be hearing about this a lot over the next year. This organization helps, uh, communities align their goals around providing early quality, early childhood education in the community, um, we're looking at that because daycare obviously is a huge issue for Pierce County and especially Plainview. Um, and in the community center, we do have that seventy child proposed daycare center, so starting to work with this entity is, is good. Um, we're gonna form a steering committee, we'll be looking for about six to ten people across the community that have an interest in childcare, education, um, leadership, city government, uh, to form that steering committee. The organization provides up to thirty thousand dollars over two years to help us with the planning activities and sort of get our, uh, our ducks in a row, so you'll see more information about that. Um, the co-share network space, so NINAD received some ARPA funding, they were offering two to three million dollars to develop co-share network spaces, um, and they have sixteen counties in northeast Nebraska competing for those dollars. We obviously got into the finals for that through Pierce County, we had, uh, three locations, uh, targeted in the county, and they have said now that our location here in town is the one that cash flows, and if you want it, we've got it, and the location is the former community building. So, was a problem because we did put a business in there, but that business has no lease, they've charged them no money, no utilities have been paid, so, do you want a co-share network space that can support fifteen to thirty people, uh, working from home or looking at home office space, uh, hot desking, and those options, or do you wanna support what's there?
Well, we need to remodel, like, your blueprints from the past, or, or similar?
So, actually Jeremy did the lighting, or the city did already, he did upgrade to, uh, LED lights in there, um, that, that stem wall issue has been corrected because Kurt kinda fixed that a few years ago. So the only thing really would be maybe address in, last person did paint, so, really maybe upgrade the flooring, um, the grant, the monies that we get for winning the contest do provide for us to install fiber in some of the other materials. Um, if you're interested, the next step then is just to work with NINAD on formulating a plan for how that facility is gonna operate, who's gonna run it, um, are you charging fees for hot desking, um, is there gonna be dedicated office space, how do we want that to look? And I could spend the next four to six months working on that, but I really don't want to if you guys don't wanna make a decision about that building, so, it's not on the agenda for today, so I just wanted to put that bug in your ear, so you can think about that.
We were chosen out of many towns, weren't we?
Sixteen counties.
Sixteen counties.
And we're still working on a location for Pierce, but, uh, yeah, and it cash flowed one because you are a, a smart city, we have one gig fiber up and down, so no broadband capabilities had to be brought in, we didn't have to work with a broadband provider to do that, and you own the community building, so. No, we didn't have to construct anything, we didn't have to buy anything, so the reason that we cash flowed the best is because of those things, so. Um, and then, I can talk to you a little bit about a housing study, Pierce County Economic Development will be applying for a NIFA grant to assess the half the cost of a new countywide housing study, the last one was done in twenty seventeen, so it's time to update. Um, and some of the priorities have changed, a lot of the communities are now kinda getting into that housing, doing the multifamily, um, and tackling some of the things that were outlined in that old housing study, which you can view on P C D N E dot com, our website. Um, but the communities now are wanting to do TIP, TIP projects, bigger developers are coming in, especially down by Hater, so in order to do that, we do need to add a TIP program, and so we're, we'll be looking at that. Um, in twenty seventeen, the, and this is before I was with PCD, so, but Plainview put four, fit five thousand dollars for that plan, the PCD board is looking at not doing it quite like that, you know, maybe making it a little bit more fair, 'cause it seemed like the communities of Plainview and Pierce paid for the bulk of the plan, and then the NIFA grant, and then the campaign kicked in ten. So we're gonna make it a little bit more fair, maybe do by population, maybe three dollars per person in, in the population, or something like that, to make that a little bit more fair, and that also then gets Osmond and Hater to contribute, because they didn't contribute last time, but did reap the benefits, so, um, we'll be looking at that. So, um, this is gonna be a late summer, early fall project, but I just wanted to let you know that that's what we'll be doing, so, um, we'll be putting out requests for proposals, um, once we kinda get that NIFA grant secured and kinda go through that, so. And there were some opinions about who we used last time, and they didn't wanna see that for that company again, so it's open for new people, any questions?
City superintendent? Do you have, if you had anything?
Uh, he probably didn't report, he was gone, so, so currently they are doing some removals in the bathhouse, and then obviously we're busy with clown days, mowing, keeping up and everything, and we're starting some concrete work around town again, so.
Thank you.
Everything looking, I know, I seen him out, uh, sweeping the street, seeing him out dragging the gravel, so, nice one.
Yeah, thank you to the city for clown days, too, I mean, this was my last year as chair, but the last five years wouldn't have done it without them, um, Kurt, the guys getting the electricity where we needed it, finding all that stuff, getting stuff hooked up, was really good.
I didn't know it was your last year as the chair.
Five years is a good run, I, if you don't get out in five years, it turns into a life term, I know how that goes.
Will you be the chair next year?
I don't know anything about, um, city, city attorney report?
I don't have much that's not otherwise on the agenda, I take it the deeds for the LV eight forty property. I take it the deeds for the LV eight forty properties, Doomer and Johnson, I just ran into Doomer today. I thought you dropped off deeds I was supposed to be reporting. The deeds have already been sent in, they've been recorded.
We did all that, yep, we took care of all that.
And who covered all the fees and the closing costs and the stamp tax? The city just pay all those fees?
Yep.
Okay. I did not know what had happened because I never got back copies of filed deeds. I remember signing it and reading it in the courthouse. I know it was done, and Courtney dropped off either good copies or poor originals. I wasn't sure which they were, but I didn't know they'd gone in. I do remember reading that in the paper.
Number seven, discussion Millen Associates' presentation on proposed drinking water solutions. Chris and I forget.
Miller.
No, no, I'm Miller.
I'm not going to, everybody can hear me, I'm just going to sit down and do this. So, you guys can all hear? Yeah, so Chris Miller, David Blau, and Millen Associates. We're just kind of stepped through, I told Jeremy we'd keep it a couple hours.
Perfect. We got little baby snacks.
Yeah, sugar, we're good to go. And worry about the garden hose getting stolen. Um, this whole thing started about a little over a year and a half ago. You guys got an administrative order, your second one in about three years, about nitrates in your wells. And so, we were issued this administrative order, and it, you're consistently over. We've taken several wells out of service. We'll talk about which wells are out of service, if they're going to be active. But we need to find something that gives you a permanent long-term solution. That's kind of the focus tonight, what we're going to do. So, as part of this consent order, they required you to do a preliminary engineering report. So, this came out, we got funding. So, we got funding, we got a grant money, which is like a ninety-ten grant, to pay for the study. See, ninety percent of that is grant, to pay for the study, to try and submit something that's due at the end of this month, to get the study in and have a solution. But then you have one year to get a, what they call an implementation schedule. So, this last one is proposed final implementation plan, is due by July fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. So, we have a little bit of time here yet to figure out exactly what we want to do because you're going to find out tonight that you guys have a few options. And so, the book is not finished. Tonight, you guys can direct us on how you want us to finish this, what direction we want to go. So, we're really here to talk about what we've learned, what we can show you, and what we have for direction. Okay? This is really informal, so if you guys have questions to go out, please ask, please speak up. Because this, this is, like I said, the whole basis of this, we go through, we finish, report by the end of the month. That's our goal. First thing we always have to do is look at populations, based on what we use for water use, how's it going to affect user rates, things like that. Your population has been really kind of steady, is slightly decreasing. We did fix it, we had, actually on the web, if you look up your population, there's eleven eighty-two and a twelve eighty-three or something, so there's two different populations for your two thousand twenty. We had the wrong one, and Jeremy, of course, beating you over the head with it, so that, but that's good. And so, if you look at our population now, this has been adjusted, but it still shows a decline. Hopefully, you guys would level out or even increase. If you do housing projects, you're an active community. But for right now, you would design for your population right now, which is a little over twelve hundred, almost fifteen hundred people. So, when we look at solutions, that's what we're looking for, is what's your current water use? We won't project that it goes down, we're going to look at, hopefully you stay stable right now. Your distribution system, I was going to put a map up here, and you can see the whole system, but it becomes quite small, it's hard to read, and we have enough of those, they're going to be hard to read in this project. But what I really wanted to point out is, if you look at your, these are your distribution sizes from two inch, three inch, four inch, six inch, and eight inch. And if you look at the majority of your system, fifty-four percent is four inch mains. They're smaller mains. This system, this PER is not focused on your distribution, but anything you do minimum right now should be six inch. For fire protection, for flow, you're always looking at six inch mains. So, if you do any improvements, make sure that we're looking at six inch mains. And a lot of those four inch are probably older sand cast, we may have to look at replacing some of those. We met with the city and talked about some valving and fire hydrants are a priority. A lot of your valves, a lot of your fire hydrants don't work. So, as part of this project, even though it's focused on new source, it's focused on how we give it a nitrate, we put some money in every project to do at least some fire hydrants and some valve replacements. So, like I said, looking at mains, you guys have a lot of the smaller mains, not a lot of large mains. So, when it comes to doing some of our improvements, we had to run some pretty decent sized mains in town to get water circulation, to get, we did a treatment plan, whatever we're going to do, to get it spread through town. I realize this is small and hard to see, the next slide actually is a blow up of this, but your water system's really composed, you have four supply wells. So, you have four wells, and they're from nineteen forty to nineteen eighty-nine. They're not spring chickens. They're some old wells, they still function, though. You have an elevated water storage that's up north, right up here. Good new tank, like I said, has, you'll see, it has good capacity, so you're set good there. And then you have a distribution system, like I said, that may be somewhat undersized if you're trying to distribute a lot of water, if you have a fire protection or a fire issue, you may have some larger mains, look at for future improvements. This is kind of a blow up, and I just kind of wanted to touch on it. So, here's Van Shell, the Van Shell well, it was constructed in nineteen fifty-four. So, again, that's seen some age. You have this well, which is your school well, it's on the corner of the block of the school. It's a nineteen forty well, so when we're looking at age, that's your one year older wells, but until two thousand twenty-one, that one is the one that hit the administrative order. That one is the ones exceeding the nitrate. We're still using it, we're still providing bottled water for it, but that well is the one that actually triggered our two thousand twenty-one administrative order that kind of set this ball rolling. You have a sixty-two well up here. That well was, is in emergency use, it was one of the first ones to go out due to nitrates. So, that well, nitrates was the first one to go out, it's not been in use for, well, I don't say fifteen years, I think, if I remember right, it's been a long time. And the only well that we have that really we're using is this one down here, which is your newest well, your eighty-nine well. That's your well, it's really the primary water supply. If you had to keep it under nitrates, that's the one you're using right there. And it does, it is below the nitrates. Capacity wise, all your wells produce a decent amount of water. You have six hundred, five hundred, seven fifty. Right here, I listed the age. Typically, you look at a well life of about fifty years before the casing goes out. It's, it's a really good that your wells have lasted this long. I don't know if those casings are good or bad, but they're still pumping, they're still in use. So, we're not seeing major corrosion issues, the water quality must be fairly decent because I've seen a lot of wells, a lot less in years that have collapsed and have not worked. So, let's attribute to the water quality tier. It must be pretty decent because you're getting a lot of life out of your wells. And there, a lot of them, they were steel casing. Like I said, we looked at some of these, they've been around for a long time. Your best well is your well number three, that's the one that's kind of in the northeast part of town. That's the one that went out, it's inactive, it went out first with nitrates, and it's sixty years old. And we're going to look at that as part of our solution, maybe. So, I'm going to walk you through that. This is just your nitrate trends. I know you guys have probably seen this before, or we've talked about this before. But if you look at this, this line right here, this is our sixty-two well, this is the one that went out in about two thousand ten, so it's been about twelve years since that one has been offline. So, this blue line right here is our nineteen forty well. This is the one that was triggered in the two thousand twenty-one AO. So, we've been using that well, you can see kind of the history of it. It's always been around eight, it bottled up, it came way down for some reason, for about three, four years, and then it's up, and now it's over ten. So, you're seeing this thing, it's excitement, we have something going on with that well. You look at the fifty-four well, this is the one that was triggered from the two thousand eighteen, and this one just went up, and then it went really up. It went to eighteen, and this dash line, the red dash line across here at ten, that's the drinking water standard for nitrate. So, that one took off, for whatever reason, that one really elevated.
Where's that one located again?
So, that one is back up a page.
That's the Van Shell.
Yep.
And this figure is actually the registration location. The previous figure actually shows the actual location of that Van Shell well. It's off about a block on that map.
And I forgot that, too. Registration is off, we need to fix that, too.
Have you done any test well sampling nearby them to see which way nitrates are coming from? I know you've done it on a more of a grand scale of miles.
Yes.
Just nearby?
We're going, we actually would like to sample, we talked to Kurt two weeks ago, and he's going to pull some samples for us in this upcoming, this next year, I think.
My point being, one concern I'd mentioned to him years back is that pivot irrigated cornfield sits right north of the Van Shell well. I was just there last night and admiring how deep green the corn is.
Yeah. And then you'll look, we're going to look at some flow direction to see that's, that's kind of probably what's feeding some of this. So, the well logs, we pulled the registration of the well logs and did schematics, and I don't especially be able to read these. The first two wells, the nineteen forty, nineteen fifty-four well, we got the depths and where the spring is in the bottom so many feet, but there was no lithologic log, there's nothing that tells me what they drilled through or how it was constructed. They just didn't do that back then, that's just the way it happened. Now, I can tell you historically, what everybody did was, from here to here, has gravel packed in it. It's gravel from top to bottom. So, nitrates typically are a floater, they're lighter than water, they stay at the top of the groundwater usually. So, what happens is, if you have a path that come all the way down here, you can have nitrates come down, those wells tend to pull nitrates in, especially if you pump them really hard. But these two wells, we don't know anything about construction. This one just had to have a concrete cap on the top, that's the only thing I know about that well. Now, your sixty-two well, the one that's kind of northeast, we had litho, lithotic logs, but I can't spit that out, and we knew a little bit about well construction. So, right here, and it's hard to see, but from eighty-four to one oh one, there was a white clay. So, there is a confining unit there that would inhibit nitrates from moving down through it if they didn't have gravel pack from top to bottom, which this well does. So, we see this, we see this, nitrates are probably coming down here, but there was actually a confining unit right here that maybe could have stopped some of that. And so, as part of the things we're going to talk about is, is there a way to renovate that well, to fix that? And maybe get some life out of that well? Now, the last well, the eighty-nine well one we have right here, this one has a bentonite seam that we packed with bentonite from eighty all the way to the top. So, you have that, that we have sealed that well off, and that's the one that is currently under your nitrate limits. So, this is the well that's lasting longest, and that's because it has a bentonite down here to about that eighty feet. These are set according to ground elevation, and the screens are set, so they're real elevations. And if you look at this, this, where this bentonite stops is about where the bottom of that white clay is. So, it actually sealed that upper aquifer and hopefully sealed some of those nitrates up. Now, the problem you have is, if you have a well drilled five hundred feet away, the gravel pack top to bottom, you have a penetration, you have a path that those nitrates can come down to. So, it protects our well to some extent, but if you have other wells, now in town, we don't have that issue, but we're going to talk about out in the country and other wells and irrigation wells, most of them are constructed like this. So, there's some things that you have to watch for that gravel pack. Historical pumping, like I said, we need some of this to project what we need for use, what we need for demand, what can we use? These are just your historical pumping, annual gallons by year, and your average. So, you pump about eighty-six million gallons a year, that's on average. Obviously, you pump a lot more in the summer than we do the winter. Your average day is about two hundred and thirty-six thousand gallons. So, if you would take that and you would do over a twenty-four hour period, you want to pump a well and never shut it off, to meet your average day, you're always going to be pumping about a hundred and sixty-five gallons a minute. Doesn't seem like a lot, but you're always pumping about a hundred and sixty-five gallons a minute. What we do is, we look at that for a peak day. So, typically, the smaller the community, the higher peaks you have because you don't have a lot of demand, and people are watering the lawns and doing all that all at once. They're a small community, so your peaks tend to be higher. But you guys, we projected about four times a peaking factor here. So, on your peak day, you're going to see about six hundred and sixty gallons a minute on a full demand day. And if you remember from your wells, your wells pump five hundred to seven hundred gallons a minute. So, you have one well that per, on a peak day, probably is being used to just provide water. Now, you have a storage tank that takes up some of that demand and gives you a little reprieve, but... So, your wells are, you have adequate capacity. If you really had two wells, one was pumping during the peak day, you would have a backup. Or you pump two of them for twelve hours a day, if you don't think of it that way. More wells are better, don't get me wrong, three, four wells are great, but if you had to do something, you could do that, and you still have your storage. But historically, you guys have done well. If you look, the only thing that was kind of interesting is, for some reason, whether we had new meters, what we did, these last two years have been a lot higher than it was in nineteen and eighteen, but maybe the drought, and maybe this. But nineteen, we had flooding, so I understand why that one's down. So, there's some of those instances you look at and you have to kind of think, what did it happen? What did we do? What was the environment around us? So, this is just the exact same data, just graphed, so you can kind of see your peaks. So, normally, if you pump about six million gallons a day, you go up to about sixteen. You know, you have about a peaking factor of about three, three and a half, and we estimated we'll use a four for design. So, we have some cushion there. And those are monthly, monthly flows. This black dash line is the average of all those by month. So, it kind of gives you an idea of just what's your summers do. They, they peak, they ramp up in June, they come back down. And January, February, March, obviously, are low months, and that's typical of almost all communities. But your design population, like I said, if we use the twelve, twelve hundred and eighty-three people right now, that would be what we designed for, to make sure that this is, we have to meet our peak today. If you do go down, great, if you go up, great, but we're going to design right now for what you have today because it's projected that would be the peak demand right now. And so, we used your six hundred and sixty gallons a minute for a peak flow, and a maximum daily then is about nine hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day. So, you're not quite pushing a million gallons a day when you are at your peak day. And all these are just part of the things you have to do in the PER. You want to look at the whole system anyway, just to give you guys an idea. I mean, we're not even got your nitrate issue yet, but these are all background things that helps to project what we need for treatment, what we need for new wells, what do we need for some of this. The one thing that we did pull up and look at was your water pumped versus your water sold. We want to know how many gallons you guys pump, and how many gallons you sell, and do we have a loss? Now, that loss can be accounted for because you flush fire hydrants, because you don't charge yourself water at the parks, or you do things like that. Your water loss, if you look at this right here, this is January, and this is two thousand nineteen, so this, this really is your worst year. This line right here that goes down, that year, two thousand nineteen, your average water loss was sixty-six percent, which seems high. Normally, you look in a fifteen percent range is what you're looking at. Now, each year, as you pump more water, remember nineteen was kind of the year, twenty, twenty-one, we pumped more water, and our percentage went down to about fifty-eight percent. But that still is a high water loss. Now, a lot of that, talking to the city, is because we flush hydrants, we do things like that. So, it's probably water that's not truly a loss. It's happening in the system to maintain the system, but we're not tracking it. So, that's how we're going to write that up, just so you know. It could be water meters. If your meters are twenty years old, and they are, and they can start not showing the amount of water that's going to the customer, you're losing revenue. But usually, it's not that high. And we talked about, the only way to fix that or to check it is, go pull a meter out that's twenty years old from somebody's house, hook a brand new meter to it, run the water through both meters same time, and see what it looks like. So, we can physically look at that and see what it does, and see if we think it's a meter issue. So, there's some checks there that we can, we can do, but that was one thing we found. You always look at your water loss and see if you have system loss because we are really pumping about fifty percent more than we need, according to what you sell. But that would truly be it. Your system storage, we did a storage evaluation. Under absolute worst case scenario, you need about three hundred and nine thousand gallons of water storage. You have two hundred and fifty. Water storage is not an exact science by any means. Your storage is perfectly acceptable the way it is, it meets your demand, there's no issues about it. A lot of times, we can calculate this, and it'll tell you you need three hundred thousand gallons, and funding agencies won't let us bill them that big. They won't let you bill maybe a hundred thousand based on the population because it's also a function of what it costs. So, your two hundred and fifty thousand gallon tank is good, it has adequate storage even based on this. Some of these, if you look, here's the actual calculations of how many gallons you need. It's just a matter of, when you look at total storage, you look at a combination of fire flow during emergency use at the same time, and what percentages do you need? So, it's a worst case scenario is three oh nine. But if you look at just what you need for equalization, or you need for fire flow, you have adequate storage. So, fire protection, and you're good on your, your storage. So, we finally get to the guts of this report, is what do we do for compliance? Nitrites are our issue, what can we do for nitrates? So, blending. One of the first things we always look at is, can we blend wells? Well, your wells are high enough, and the other wells are high enough that we really can't just blend and try to get by what we want to do. That's probably not a long-term solution. So, blending really is not an option for us unless we drill a new well. Consolidation. You know, Plainview's one of the largest communities around, you know, we're not going to probably be able to run Osmond and get water from them. Now, Osmond has drilled two wells, like recently, in fifteen, I think, and seventeen, and they have low nitrate water, and they drilled in town, but they got... But, they got low water, but they probably can't provide us enough water. And if they do, we have to drill them two wells, we'd have to buy the pipeline to get it here, so it's probably not feasible. Brunswick's the same way. You guys are kind of the hub, so you'd probably be better off finding your own water, but you have to evaluate consolidation as part of this stuff. New source. So when you talk to everybody and you see the maps, there's just nothing but red around this for nitrates, it's really high. So, can we evaluate is there a new source? We went through that evaluation, and we're gonna present that to you. Can we modify well sixty-two one? Is that a risk worth taking for a lower cost to see what that development has going on? And then usually, we always tell you, this is the last resort, but treatment is the last resort. Because you will see, when we did a treatment evaluation, we put costs to it, we put going and cost to it. So when you go to treat a well, or you go to treat several wells, the operation maintenance is high every year, and it does not go down. So you will see why we'll, we'll talk about that, but treatment is usually your last option. Sometimes it's the option, it's the best option. There are about five nitrate treatment plants in Nebraska, so they're, they're out there. Creighton, right up the street, is one of them, and they were the first one. And why is that? Because you guys have high nitrates around here. That's part of the reality of what you have. We didn't really look at this, the point-of-use, point-of-entry devices, so these are the little things underneath your sink. We have done these projects, we have done these for small communities. EPA does not recommend them for over a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five connections. You have to maintain those, the city's responsible for those, you have to go in and test those, you have to go into the homes and, and take care of them. And, if you have to test six hundred units, and you have to do that every quarter, that is a lot of units a day. I don't think you can do it, and that's probably why the EPA has a limit on how many you can do with that. And they, they pretty much say a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five is max. I don't remember, Hegler was how many?
Hundred and twenty.
Hundred and twenty, we did one for a hundred and twenty, I don't know, it's been five or seven years ago, and...
It was for arsenic treatment.
Yeah. I don't think they were real happy when we're done, because they, that's a lot of magnets. That guy had a lot of work to do, just for a hundred units, so you have a lot more, you have more people, but...
And they did lean, make the sampling a little more lenient, they, they were able to drop it down to, they had to do like a quarter of the town every quarter. They had to leave sample once annually, but that's still entering the house once a year, and filters changed every year.
And that's because arsenic is not a direct impact contaminant. Arsenic accumulates over a period of years, so it's a, it's what they call a chronic contaminant. Nitrate's acute, if you drink enough nitrates right away, you can be sick, baby, blue baby syndrome. So it's an acute, so therefore you have to test more often. So, it's a little different for nitrates. So we're gonna kind of just walk through this new source evaluation, and I'm sure there will be questions in what we have, but... This is a map from Department of Natural Resources, it's from two thousand and fourteen, so it's old, but the gist of it is exactly what you see. So, right here is Brunswick, here's Plainview, here's Creighton. Each one of these big squares is a, is a township and a range, so it's thirty-six square miles. But, anything that's orange or darker red is all above ten. We have nitrates that exceed ten. And so they generated this map, they had six hundred and six samples they took to generate this map, and said, "Look at our nitrates, you guys are doing terrible. You have nitrates all over, your wells are terrible." So, when we first saw this map, the first thing, we've been doing Brunswick's engineering for about thirty years, and we know that those well right there in the center of that red hotspot is two. It's two milligrams per liter. So, that's the first thing I noticed and thought, well, yes, they sampled a lot of stuff, but it must be dependent on how the well was built, how the well's constructed, and how, how it's actually been operated.
How deep did they test to get those numbers?
I haven't.
I know, but how deep did they go?
Uh, four hundred feet, and I, I'm gonna show you that. So what we did is we kind of took, we did a study area. So we wanted to evaluate geologic formation, nitrate data, saturated thickness, things that, that are, the physical aspects out there, how this, this system works, how you get water through a well. So if you look at this red dash line that goes around here, this is our study area, it was three hundred and thirty-six square miles. The very little squares, this is probably the easiest one to see, but this little square there is a mile. So the big ones, these are township and ranges, this is a big township and range, so this is the thirty-six miles above Plainview. Every one of those dots, the yellow dots, is a well that's registered irrigation well. The area around it, the bigger area, is a thousand foot. So if you sit in your well, you're supposed to be at least a thousand foot away from any other well. So just from a visual, not trying to figure out which well and everything this is, you look at this and say, where are my areas that don't have wells? Here, here, around Foster, here, and there's some sporadically over here. But otherwise, you have a lot of these, there's four to a, four to a mile. So every quarter has its own well, it has irrigation. So there are a lot of wells out there. But, we wanna look and see, what do we have out there for geology? So, one of the things we also wanna look at is groundwater flow direction. Plainview is blessed to have groundwater that comes this way from Brunswick, also comes down this way. So these big squiggly lines are what they call equal potential lines of groundwater elevation. So if you think about it, groundwater runs downhill. So, this elevation here is eighteen hundred, this is seventeen fifty, this is seventeen hundred. So underneath the ground, we have groundwater that's flowing some direction based on elevation. Same thing, if you have a table, drop a marble on it, and tilt it, it's exactly what this is, think about this being higher, this being lower, it's dropped a hundred feet, groundwater is running that way, underground. It's just running from equal potential lines, so these arrows, if you draw anything perpendicular between these, that's the way the groundwater is running. That's what's feeding us. So, if you have a well here, I'm not quite sure if it runs here, or if it's coming from down here. Is that well that has a farm field up here, are we pulling nitrates from there, or here? And it'll change seasonally, but these are regional flow directions. And like I said, you guys are for some reason, are right in the center of this great hub, you have an interesting geology there. So the wellhead protection area, MDEE, which used to be our Department of Health, calculates what they call wellhead protection area, see where your water comes from for every community in Nebraska. This was their wellhead protection area they developed for you guys, and it had all your wells, and each one of these represents a different timeframe, and from here to here is eleven to twenty years. And this scale's a little different, because this is a mile, so this is a mile. So we're talking this thing, you're pulling water in twenty years about two and a half miles. And this narrow band is where your water would come from in a perfect world. So if you had water right here, it would never reach your well, it would go by it. If you had water here, it would never go into your wells, it would go between them. But anything that was within this little cigar band thing would be pulled to your well eventually, based on time of travel. Now, these are used analytical methods, they're a, a rough calculation, they're not exact science, but that is what MDE did. You guys paid for a study, they developed a three-dimensional groundwater flow model. They did test pumping of your wells, so LRE came out and did this, and they calculated new wellhead protections, and they did it for fifty years. Now, there's some point, all these grays are possibilities during times when they think wells are pumping, so really, they outlined in blue where your water is coming from, and it changes seasonally. So based on the three-dimensional flow model, there is some of this that goes this way, but there's also a lot of it that comes from up here. So we know better where that water is coming from. And it makes sense with what we saw in the regional groundwater flows, so all that, that makes sense. So you guys right now have a wellhead protection, a fifty-year time of travel that looks like this. So well capacities. We take all those wells, the little blue dots in the first one are our study area, and we plug in what they were registered at for capacity, how many gallons a minute do they pump, and we get this color raster image. So the dark greens, like in here, are lower capacity, they're usually like three hundred to five hundred. Whites, you see a white here and a white here, they're kind of sporadic, but you see these pumps of whites, those are over a thousand gallons a minute. So as it goes from darker to lighter, you increase from basically three hundred to a thousand gallons a minute. So, you see all this area right here is lighter, basically, you see a band here of darker, and it starts getting lighter again. Osmond here, they're in about the five hundred gallon a minute range, we know you guys pump about five hundred gallons a minute. So, we can see a band here of maybe low-capacity wells, a lot of those may be domestic, maybe it's not farmed. Maybe there's some area there that's swamped, that is protected because nobody's gonna drill a well there because it's wet. So, there are some things that we can look at, of why are these cases, why does it look like that? We look at what they call transmissivity. Transmissivity is a tough term in, in hydrogeology terms, but basically, if you think about it, this is twenty thousand gallons per day per foot, and this is fifty thousand gallons per day per foot. That's what those lines are, how they kind of sit in there. So, if you would think about, the higher the number, the easier it is to get water out of the aquifer. It's just better, it's a bigger formation, it's better to get out. And this is not a true example, but at twenty thousand gallons, if you think about it being a straw on a shake, you suck on it and you can't get it out, it's really thick, it takes a lot more effort to get that shake into your mouth. Or if you think about at fifty thousand gallons, it's a glass of pop with ice in it, it's easier to withdraw. So think of transmissivity that way, think of it as a way that you can get it out of the ground, and just reflects how the formation is underneath that well. The higher the number, the better it is. So, all those places that have better wells, they're all down here and they're in that fifty thousand gallon. If you're looking to sit in your well, here's twenty thousand, we don't really wanna go in this area, it's still twenty thousand here, it's twenty thousand here. So we obviously have increasing transmissivity as we kind of go west and south. Okay? Saturated thickness. So all this is, is the amount of water that's in the aquifer. There's a bearing form- formation, there's a shale. How much water stands up in that well when it's not pumping is called saturated thickness. What's the thickness of water that I could actually pull from? The thicker the water, the more I could get the well, the deeper the well, the more water I could get out of there. So again, Plainview's right here in the center, it's in about a two hundred, these yellow numbers represent how thick the aquifer is. It's in about a two hundred foot deep range, it's two hundred feet of water. As you go north, it's a hundred. So again, if we're looking at siting new wells, I should go where it's thicker. As you go towards Brunswick, it goes three hundred, four hundred, five hundred. And then it starts the other way, the thickest water is right here underneath Brunswick. So, if you were looking for water source, we wanna go where the water's thicker, deeper, we can get our wells and our screens down deeper, we can keep those nitrates up top. Down here, you could come directly south, and if you come south about five or six miles, you start getting into three hundreds, it'll be a little bit better. If you go down here to Foster, we're standing about the same area, we're standing about that two hundred feet of saturated thickness. So, keep that in mind, we'll keep eggs in them, just throwing out data here, it all comes to a head at some point. Brunswick, again, we took all the nitrate data that we could find from that database, those six hundred points, we contoured our own maps, we made kind of our own nitrate maps. And so when we were talking about, can you go four or five miles down here, this is green, zero to three parts per million nitrates. So if you would go south here about six, seven miles, you're right at the tip of this, and if you get down to here, you could get into some lower nitrate wells. If you go down the highway, you get down to here, you go about eight, nine miles down the highway, you could get into some low-nitrate wells. That's what's been recorded down there, we know that they're low there. If you go to Brunswick, it's, it's in this area that's in fifteen, we are four hundred feet deep, our screen's at three fifteen. So, we're four hundred feet deep, there's Brunswick's well, and it's right in the middle of a ten to twenty parts. And here's the actual historical data for nitrates. We drilled that well in about two thousand and one, and the nitrates have never been over two. So I've got over twenty years of nitrate data there, and we haven't exceeded two. And that's a lot because of how it's drilled, and there's no wells around it that have holes poke through it. So, it's possible in those high-nitrate areas to get a well with low nitrates. And if I back up one, you will see there was a clay lens right here, and we packed it off, and we tried to keep all that stuff up here. There's also an upper lens of clay, and we packed that off, and we kept all of our well, tried to isolate from the nitrates. So we put a bentonite seal in there. Today, we would bentonite seal from the top of screen all the way up, take no chances, especially in your area. We would try and seal that so that we don't have the short circuit coming down to our screen from outside the well after we drill the well. So, we pulled well logs from Department of Natural Resources just to kind of look at, what do we have west? Why is Brunswick have such low nitrates? And is there that same clay formation out there maybe closer to you guys? And so this is actually four miles west of you guys, right down the highway, four miles west. There is this clay lens, right here, at two hundred and thirty to two hundred and fifty-five feet, so a twenty-five foot of a clay material. And then we have right below that, sand and gravas. So we have that lens still shown, deep. So if you, if you drill a well up here, there's a clay lens here, a little one, there's little clay lens here, there's a little clay lens here. But if you gravel pack and you drill a well, and you put gravel all the way down your screen, you have now perforated all this. But if you didn't drill down here through this one, and a lot of well drillers will show you did not, there may be a way to seal this off and get good water. So, in order to either prove or disprove this theory, Kurt ran around and did a bunch of sampling for us. Last year during the irrigation season, when the irrigation wells were running, Kurt went around and, and pulled samples from local irrigation wells. We had to pay to go drill a well or do anything, but we wanted to pull some samples and see what happens. So, we went over to Brunswick, and we confirmed, hey, you're in a twenty parts, this thing is eighty-three feet deep. It's not deep, the well's only eighty-three feet, and that well pumps, we're pulling nitrates. And that's great, because we know the nitrates are there, but they didn't drill deep. You come down here, so this is again Plainview, one, two, three miles, one, two, three, four miles sa- south. This is three hundred and forty-five feet deep, the screen though, was from fifty-eight to three forty-five. So they actually screened this whole thing, top to bottom, basically. And their nitrates are one point two. So, again, they must have that little confining layer that we saw up here. There's a little clay lens right up here at about forty feet, that's holding that water up, holding that nitrates up. Cause you can go down to some of these other ones, and you know this one, down here, now we're talking, it's a few miles down, a little bit closer to town. But this cluster right here, we had nitrates of three, nitrates of nine, and those two wells are less than a quarter apart. The nitrate at nine, there was no registered information here, but this one had a screen from seventy to one thirty, so it's not even in the deep formation yet. But it goes from seventy to one thirty, with the screen. Come straight down out of Plainview, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight miles, so we're about here. We have nitrates of fifteen, and you go right below it, you have nitrates of fifteen, and then you have nitrates on the other side of it at one point three, one point two. These are screened from fifty to three hundred, fifty to three fifteen, one sixty to three hundred. So we're, we're kind of getting the feeling that, you know, if you put the screen deep, now, remember Brunswick, we didn't start the screen till three fifteen. But you put the screen deep, you seal it above, you probably can get out of some of these nitrates. But, is it a risk? Absolutely. Would you drill any of this without drilling test holes and seeing what you could do? Absolutely not. So there's some background data that I think we need to do in the next twelve months, if we wanna look at a new source. And this kind of shows it, and if you go way down here, here's Foster, you know, this was point one. Those nitrates are low down there, but it's also a long ways, and that cost gets expensive.
How big a line? Excuse me, how big a line would you run if you went that far?
You know, we probably run...
Six or eight or something?
Oh, twelve or sixteen.
Bigger than that to go that distance?
Yes, and elevation-wise, and if you ever wanna put future wells out there, you want the capacity. If you put, let's say you put a twelve inch that would run twelve hundred gallons a minute, two wells pumping it full-time for some reason. If you ever wanted to do a third well, you have to look at something bigger, probably a plant of the future. You're gonna grow, right?
I don't know, if you looked at the surface elevation, I've got some land down there, ten miles, but it's about, I would guess, a hundred or a hundred and fifty feet rise in the surface elevation, and a hump between here and there.
Yep.
You'd have to pump over the top of the hump to get it up here then, from down there.
You would probably have to go to a pump station to get up there.
Something.
Yep, so, again, the study you guys had, looked at your fifty-year time of travel, looked at your groundwater flow model that was built for you guys, which was very helpful, they did some great stuff. And, we didn't do this, this is, they looked at all these wells... And, we didn't do this, this is, they looked at all these wells, each one of these dots is a registered well, and they developed cross-sections. So they took each well, plotted it, and tried to show us where groundwater level was, where the bottom of the aquifer was, where the screens were when they knew it. And they developed three really good cross-sections. And because of those low nitrates, these two areas where they thought we could originally look at, where do we get water from? And so the only problem is, this is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven, eight miles to get into this. And this one's about the same as the crow flies, so you're at least eight, nine miles a pipe to get into these sites. But, historically, they have some low nitrates. So if you're looking for low nitrates, looking for a source, these are what they looked at. So there's, these are, they're called geologic cross-sections. They, they go from here to here, so if you look at this one, this is called A to A prime. And it's kinda cutting, basically look at it west to east, think about that. There is B, that starts way up here, comes down, right here's plain view, comes through plain view with our city wells, and goes all the way down to here. So we're talking, these are thirty, forty miles of sections. And then you have this one, north to south, cuts right through this one, that's C, C prime. I'm probably just boring the tears out of you guys, but I'm sorry.
What was the point of the last one?
Just going down Foster, if you look, they, they looked at this area here as a potential well field site, so they ran one straight north and south into this.
Just their test line?
Yes, just a test line. So, this is the one that's, that basically is AA prime, west to east. Your guys' wells are right here, now I'm expecting you to be able to read these, but each one of these is the registration number. When you get down to here, this is the bottom of the aquifer. Some wells, like this one, did not reach the bottom, so they don't know exactly where that's at, so you see this stop. And then some of them hit the blue. Now if you can see colors, so this one, if you remember, was east to west, so from here, this is west of plain view, this is east of plain view, and we're right here in the middle. If you look at red, these wells, the red numbers tell you what the nitrates were, and red means they're high nitrates. So, you look here, we look, again, we look west, and they're high nitrates, they're high nitrates. These are high nitrates, they go to yellow, then these are green. So as you get to the far east, almost by Osmond, you have lower nitrates. These little blue ticks up here, this is where the water table is, that's the height of the water table. So, as you see, this depth is thicker than this depth. So we're seeing that there's more water as you go west, there's less as you go east, which is what that saturated thickness showed, which is all those, those maps actually showed. These here, these big red pockets, so this is actually trying to tell you geology summarized. Sandy is yellow, blue is the bottom of the shale, red is big gravel. And so we're trying to figure out, hey, what happened? Well here, it looks like they have gravel at the top, if you apply nitrates here, it would run right down and probably contaminate these wells. So, nitrates are moving down, groundwater's somewhat close to the surface, and they're sucking down, so you could probably have nitrates, we could see nitrates increasing. Over here, you know, you have less water table, but it doesn't look like you have any big gravel, so it's gotta move slower down here, and we have green. And that's what Osmond did, they drilled two wells deeper at the sites they had, cause they could. You guys cannot, we cannot go deeper, that was one of our original thoughts, is can we tap down? Your wells, a lot of them are at the bottom of the shale already, can't go deeper. Unless we go several miles deeper and try to get Dakota, but it's really salty, anyway. But, if you look at these, and it doesn't look good for us because they're all low nitrates, they're all high nitrates, I'm sorry. So this is the one northwest, the southeast, right here's a legend too, I should point out the last one. So this red line, that's where we're looking. And so this again is B, is up here, B prime is down here. So this is cutting down towards Foster. Now, what's really interesting about this is, again, right here is plain view. Here, we're, we're heading kind of south, southeast. But you have wells that are right next to each other, this one's red, this one's green. They're right next to each other. Again, it's well construction. But, I would be concerned if we were doing a municipal well, if I drilled next to a well that was gravel packed, I'm guessing this one from top to bottom, and I drill right next to it, I now have a point of penetration right around my well that I could pull nitrates in. Or it could pull nitrates in faster than I wanted to. And you can see some of these, these ones that look hairy, right here, that may be blurry, but that's screening from top to bottom. That's showing the interval where these are screening. So some of these wells that they had information on, they're screening from top to bottom, all the way down. And then some of these where they're screened, it's the bottom half, you're green, so you're, you're low nitrates. And, this red line here is about five, six miles away. So there were some wells within that that were really shallow right next to a red one, and it's green next to red, it's well construction. If you can get down deep, there's good formation, and we can seal it off, we may have a shot at putting a new source. Same thing, I won't, I won't bore you with another bold description, but you go north to south, south, you go down here, there's a big gravel formation here. There's good saturated thickness, but again, we see greens and reds right next to each other. And they're both down deep, so it's well construction. But we're concerned about how are the other wells around us constructed? These I'll go through quick, I just drew a line, basically you're talking about elevation, so this is plain view, I drew it out to here for reference. Here's the country club, right there. So, the elevation up here, at the end of this line, it goes up the hill, comes down to plain view. So we have pretty good elevation change. We are basically, if we put a well out here, it's flowing downhill, we're gravitating into town. So once we pump through that surface, it'll basically gravitate to town. It'd take very little to get it to our tank, sticks up a hundred feet, but we could get it here, and it would flow into town, wouldn't have to have a pump station. Okay? And that's all I'm getting at with this figure. This one, I went, the same thing, I drew a line from plain view south. And you look at it, here's plain view, we're up the top of the hill, same thing, it's, it's gravitating into town. When you look at the one to Foster, we're pumping uphill the whole way. So that one probably would require a booster pump station. Did not look at a hydraulic, depends how much we're pumping and what we're doing, but, if you're looking out here, and you're pumping into town, and you follow the highway up, you're going uphill the whole time. So if you tried to hit the top of your tower, we may have a couple hundred pounds of pressure there, so we'd have to either have some way to booster it up, so we don't have so much pressure on our pipe, or have really high pressure pipe, which isn't usually good. So, here's what we looked at. We didn't pick a site, we don't know where we'd wanna go, because there are several options for you guys. You could go anywhere, so I, I picked a five mile radius. If you would go five miles a pipe and drill two wells, your cost is about four point eight million. So you're gonna take four point eight million, you're gonna find a site hopefully, somebody's gonna let you drill somewhere, wells. We're gonna look at the surrounding area, and we're gonna say, hey, we don't put two wells out there, we hope that we can screen the bottom, we seal off the top, there's not a lot of wells around us that are gonna be penetrating next to us, and maybe it's even a protected area. And it's four point eight million. So principal and interest, assuming no grants, you're paying three hundred thousand dollars a year for that, that project. Okay? And we're gonna compare this against other options, treatment. So we're gonna look at this, so I just kinda threw this out. So right now, if you look at that based on your users, you're adding about thirty-seven dollars a month. It's very unlikely you will get no grant. Right now, you guys qualify for a fifty fifty grant, so you cut that in half. Because if you do a project, because you have high nitrates, you guys rank high on the funding agency, you're looking at right now a fifty fifty grant. So, worst case scenario, you're at seventy dollars a user, which is an absurd amount of money. Or best case scenario, you're at fifty-one dollars if you would do four point eight million. Okay? So, you gotta have something to look at, where could I go to do that? Is there something reasonable? So I threw this out, we, we did some soul searching around that geologic formation. And, this yellow area right here, you might recognize that as the golf course. So, the golf course has, each one of these here is a quarter section, so this is a mile. So right here is the highway, and here's the highway going to Creighton, here's the highway coming into plain view. This is about five miles a pipe. There's not a lot of irrigation wells out here, there's not one per quarter section, that's for sure. The ones that are out here, look at the depths. One twelve, forty, 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 one ninety, one thirteen, seventy-two, ninety-five. There are not a lot of deep wells in that area. They have not tapped that because you have a swamp over here and you have groundwater, it's very shallow, they can get all the water they need from shallow wells. Okay? Now, the newer wells, at least a lot of them, there's one here, there's one here, two, two twenty, two seventy, one ninety-two, and two eighteen, that goes all the way around our site. We can get down deeper, and again, you're gonna get deeper as you go this way, if you remember saturated thickness. Groundwater flow is coming across here like this, so groundwater flow's basically from east to west across here. So, there is land out here that is a lot of pasture ground, that is just hay ground, that is not being irrigated, that is not getting crops and fertilizers put on it. That's protecting this, and there's no deep wells out here except for these. So one of Kurt's tasks is, he's gonna go out and he's gonna sample these for us, and let's see what those nitrates look like. We were hoping to have those tonight, but they didn't get done. But, that's one thing I think we have to do, if you really are serious about a source, this site looks like it would be promising to us. Okay? And so, as you zoom in, again, these are the sites that have the deep wells, this is just kind of trying to see, there's a pivot here obviously. But, if we would look somewhere around the country club, it appears that a lot of the wells down there are shallow, there's a few deep wells starting to develop out there. But that would be a site within five miles, would be within that four point eight million. There's not other sites, a lot of people are drilling deeper and have those penetrations going through, we'd be concerned about. But there's risk associated with this. There's definitely risk associated with this. We tried to take all those wells and we just kinda did a plot. So here's the country club right here, and you see there's not a lot of big irrigation wells around there, but we just plotted the depths. So the numbers are actually the depth of the well. And so you see this two seventy, two eighty-four, as you go this way, it's deeper, but even down here, we're in the one hundreds, one hundreds, one hundreds. So, it's kinda, for some reason, I think it's because it's swamp land, it's, it's pasture, there's not a lot of wells out there, they're not that deep. So this one kinda stood out to us. As you go this way, the aquifer gets thinner, so they're not as deep. And if you're looking for a new source, to me, I just wanna go where the most water is. So, we're kinda leaning toward go west, go to more water. But, again, there's, there's a risk associated with that. And again, here's the country club, I just set a star there, and you look at saturated thickness, we're on the edge between three hundred and four hundred feet. So we're gaining from here to here at least a hundred feet. So we're, we're getting some better water. If you look down here in these areas that had low nitrates, this we can get down, if we go far enough, we'll get down in this three, four hundred, and we have lower nitrates, but you're, you're going more for pipe. So there's a break even cost there. At some point in time, you can't afford to go that far, and you can afford to do treatment. Okay? So, that brings us to treatment. So, with our treatment, if we wanna treat wells, we have to bring them all together. You can't either treat each well site and have a whole bunch of little plants, have three or four of them, or you treat two wells and bring them together. Or you treat one well and you don't treat the other well for now, and then hope in the future, that one either stays low in nitrates and you never treat it, or you bring those two together. So that's why we talked about the sixty-two well. They're both on the east edge of town. It would be fairly easy to pipe to. And if we could renovate that sixty-two well one, we may be able to do some minimal improvements and get the nitrates down, and see what that does, and then maybe we treat the sixty-two well, and hope the eighty-nine one stays there, but if not, we pipe those two together. Because we could do that. So, treatment options. There's really two main ways to do this, you do an ion exchange, which is kinda like a water softener, it's under your sink. You have a media there, and it, it absorbs nitrates, and then you have to flush those off on occasion. And then, and you use something like salt water, brine, to flush those off, and then those sites open back up and they absorb more nitrates. And when they get full, you flush them off again. The problem with ion exchanges, you have a brine waste. You have a waste that we can't readily get available, I can't dump salt water out to your fields because, guess what, it kills, kills the ground. So we talked to the state, and out here, they would probably require us to put that in a line lagoon facility. We'd have to put it in a lagoon, we'd have to buy a plastic liner, and they'd have to evaporate out of that liner, it can't go anywhere. Which adds a huge cost to disposal of this system. Okay? So I can now build a line facility. But, nice thing about ion exchanges, the waste is much less than the second option, which is reverse osmosis. Reverse osmosis is an interesting animal, it's, it's a cartridge that actually, osmotic pressure pushes everything through this, this filter. And everything come out this side is clean, and all the contaminants are stopped on the other side. Okay? Problem is, the waste is about twenty-five percent. So for every gallon you put in, you get three quarters out the back end that's good, and the rest of it you have to waste. It's got a really high waste stream. So we lose a lot of capacity in our wells because of that. But, looking at, preliminary, looking at the, just preliminary calculation, we talked to the state, they may allow us to direct discharge this. We could, since this has enough waste, we have enough water mixed with the contaminants, we have elevated nitrates, which were dumped in the surface water, but, we may be able to discharge this to a creek. So for right now, we assume that we can discharge that. We also assume we'd have to put a little pump station and pump it for two miles and get all the way to the river, but that may not be the case either, we may be able to put that in some other thing closer, but for tonight's discussion, we did worst case, you pump it all the way to the river. So, those are the two methods we looked at, there's also a biological method, that you can basically build a wastewater treatment plant for water, and you grow bugs, they eat the nitrates. I have a real problem with that because if you blow that, you now have bugs going into your system, and it's, it's not trying true here. I don't know if anybody in Nebraska's done that yet, they say they use it in Europe and all that stuff all the time, but I don't know that I wanna be the guinea pig. So, we could look at that, we could have more discussions of that in the next year if you want, but, right now, we didn't evaluate that. It doesn't have near the waste stream, but you have bacteria, you have bugs that you're growing to take care of the nitrates, that you will have to waste and do something.
Do you know an estimated cost on the reverse osmocal system?
Yes, so I, I know all those costs, I'm, I'm a handyman.
And doesn't Kurt dump theirs into their sewage system now?
They did, uh, when we did the last renovation about eight, ten years ago, we took it to the creek directly. Because they were putting it through their wastewater plant, and we were putting all that water through the wastewater plant and wasting money repumping it, and we got a permit to take it directly to the creek. So, for Creighton, they do direct discharge. Okay? And we assisted them with that permit. This is just, these are pictures actually of Creighton's, just so you guys know, this is actually an R O system. And, this is what you're looking at, is all the water comes and goes through these. And it goes through, and that's the osmotic, the stuff that comes out, we have a waste, we have a clean water. And then it goes to a clear well here, and we pump it back in the system. So this is running about two hundred PSI. So you have to boost the pressure to push it through, to get that pressure through those filters. And then, we have to break air, put it in a clear well, and re-pump it. So really, you're pumping that water three times. So if you think about it, we, we pump it a lot, there's a lot of energy costs associated with this. Okay? And the membranes are good for about three to five years, and they're expensive. But, it's doable, it works, and not only does it take out nitrates, it takes out arsenic, it takes out uranium, it takes out bacteria, it takes a lot of stuff out.
Takes all your minerals out.
Yes.
So don't we have to put minerals back in?
So we have to bypass some of it. So we always have to take something around, otherwise it'd be a super corrosive, you're right on, I should've mentioned that. But you'd have a corrosive water that would eat up all your copper pipes, galvanized pipes. So you have to look at also probably chemical injection to rebalance those minerals. If we can't bypass enough to get the nitrates out. Preliminary numbers, we can, we can bypass, it's about, like I said, about eighteen, twenty percent, we can take around that and re-blend in. So, ion exchange is, again, it's, it's kinda like what's under your sink, these are ion exchange compartments. You can line them up, for, for what we looked at here, you would have about ten thirty, thirty inch diameter containers stacked in a building that we could use ion exchange for. And if you use smaller vessels, you don't have the waste stream, you don't have to backwash one at a time. Instead of, they used to use really big vessels, we'd do twelve foot diameters and stuff. But then when you went to backwash, you were backwashing hundreds of gallons a minute, that then usually flooded your sewer system, then we had to have a backwash tank, we had to hold it and release it slowly, so, we're getting smarter as we do this. But, smaller tanks, you have to have a brine, so these guys are hand loading brine solution, they're dumping into a brine tank to backwash those. Uh, and then outside, you had a, a backwash tank, or you had some, sometimes a brine saturator out there to hold salt. So, I just wanted to show you some pictures, just, it's hard to talk about ion exchange in R O, you don't have some visual, so I'm a visual type of person. So, I just wanted to show you some pictures, just, it's hard to talk about ion exchange and R O, you don't have some visual, so I'm a visual type of person. So really, for treatment, we have several, we wanna look at a phased approach, we'd like to write this up as a phased approach for you guys. Not only do we not wanna jump in and do treatment right away, but maybe we look at, this is your sixty-two well, this is your eighty-nine well. And maybe we start with trying to renovate this well, I'm gonna show you how we're gonna do that, but I think we can seal off that, that well. And try to do that, the first shot, you would spend about a hundred thousand dollars doing it. And you can seal that off and we can pump it and see if it works. And if it does work, then we could do some piping renovations, put a V F D on it and it may pump like that for decades, I have no idea. And then the second phase would be, do we treat it? So we could take this well, again, this well is below nitrates right now. So we talked about, we could put a treatment plant over here, just about two blocks away, two and a half blocks away. We could treat this well, if we, that was just, these are randomly selected areas, that's not, I'm not saying that that has to go there. But, is it the Black Hills, are you sure, building, okay. So, it looked like a decent place to put it, it's kind of an industrial area anyway, I mean, you know, the building doesn't have to look bad by any means, but it's not a pretty building either. They're a metal building or something, but we could pipe it over to here, we could treat it. We have sewer line you could extend up, but you can't read, these are four inch lines. And if I wanna put six hundred gallons a minute through a treatment plant, I have to upgrade all those. So what we'll probably end up doing is laying a larger line to the treatment plant and laying a larger line back, hooking this one in, all these six inches into the line, so I can get it back out to your system. So we probably have two lines in there for piping to get it out and distribute it. But we do have a sewer line here, if we did an R O and we could take it to the sewer, but your sewer has some issues. So we're thinking about, we take it out here, we dump it and we take it somewhere else that we can discharge and direct it in service. And that would be something we'll have to work out with the state. If it was ion exchange, again, they want us to put it in a lagoon, I have no idea where we can put that lagoon, we would not want that lagoon in town. So we would want that somewhere away from us. In order for a cost comparison, we use the exact same assumption as an R O, we had to put in a, a pump and pump it two miles somewhere. I assume the lagoon would be somewhere within two miles, so I put a pump, I pumped it to a lagoon two miles away. It could be northeast, I don't know where we put it right now, but there's cost in there to put it two miles from us. If we get it closer, we save money, if we don't, if it goes farther, we have to add money for piping. But it's not that big of a rate, it's a couple hundred gallons a minute, so it's not big piping. But, we could also put a treatment plant right here. You can either do individual ones, or you could pipe this one down to here, we can see how long we can blend it, depending on what the nitrate concentration is currently of this, we haven't sampled that one in a while. Kurt's gonna sample that, we'll see what it is. But we could build a treatment plant down here where we have sewer, we have larger lines at least, we have some six inch lines. But, then we're kinda committing to having the treatment plant down on this well. If we do a phased approach, we treat this well or we try to renovate it first, then we build a treatment plant, and maybe this well always stays below ten. Historically, you guys have not had that happen yet, but maybe it would, maybe we're, we let up and something happened. From a standpoint, this is just for you guys, just kinda the giving idea of a general cost. We did actual costs, we talked to vendors, I got quotes for equipment. And, but this is from an E P A report where they looked at several treatment plants. The red line here is an R O treatment cost, the blue line is ion exchange cost, and these are average flow of million gallons a day. So, these are much bigger plans, you guys, your average flow is like point two, it's like right here. But the only thing I want you to get out of this is you typically see ion exchange lower than reverse osmosis. But none of these included disposal cost, these are just treatment cost. So when we did our evaluation and looked at actually disposal cost, they, that wasn't true for us. So here's the million dollar slide. So we did an evaluation and we looked at several, we looked at actually five different options. Our first one is our new source we talked about, four point eight million. So that gives you a principal and interest payment, again, all these assume no grant money, I didn't cut them in half, I just, this is a comparison. So you can kinda get an idea of the amount of money that we're talking about. Principal and interest payment is almost three hundred thousand dollars, but your O N M, your change in O N M, what it would cost you is about fifteen thousand dollars a year. Because the only thing you're really out, you're still pumping the wells, you had to pump two more wells, do a new well. Only thing you're really out is somebody's time to drive out and check the wells that's five miles away. And they do that twice a week or whatever they wanna do, but that's really what you're out, is gas and time, because everything else you're doing right now. You'll probably take two more wells out of service you're not doing. So your O N M cost is much lower for a new source. And as you see that, that's three hundred thousand is the equivalent annual cost. So if I looked at this on what it costs us a year, this is three hundred thousand a year. So then this is R O treating for two wells. I blend, I take eighty-nine, I take the sixty-two well and I treat both. Right away, right up front, you guys said, you know what, I'm done with this, we're gonna treat two wells. I wanna be done, I wanna have a solution, that's what we're gonna do. So, as you see between that and R O of just one well, if you treat it for just one well, you don't save a lot of money, you save some of the equipment. But you would build the building obviously large enough in case you had to treat the well in the future, or you would at least be able to expand it. So, there's some cost savings there, I mean, there's a million and a half bugs. The operation and maintenance goes down almost by a hundred thousand a year, uh, not quite that, but seventy thousand dollars a year, but your interest payment here, your principal interest payment goes down about a hundred thousand. But you're still talking a half million dollars on the best case for treatment. And those are numbers based on what you have for chemical use, power use, estimated from the vendors that sell the equipment. So they're thinking that's about what you have. You guys have a high amount of silica, which is just a natural concurrent contaminant. And your high silica requires us to have a lot of anti-scale in an R O system. So, we accounted for that chemical use in here. Ion exchange, so in our case, these capital costs are almost the same, and that was just a coincidence, but that's because these have the line lagoon facility with them. We included that cost. The treatment was cheaper, but when I had to put that line facility to treat that, it came up almost the same. So, again, these costs are all about the same, it's a matter of, it's risk, it's risk versus reward. Do we look at a new source because it could save you several hundred thousand dollars a year? But it's a risk. Now, today, you will love this, the website, N D E published out their website, and for some reason, the new infrastructure bill money. Our legislation decided that they are going to give, right down here, this L B E ten fourteen E. They're going to give two point eight million dollars to whoever qualifies. And it may be five systems, maybe one, but you have to have two things, you have to build an R O plant and you have to have a nitrate issue. And that money is available for people in Nebraska, communities, not, not individual people, this is for public water supply. If you build an R O plant and you have a nitrate issue, they're gonna give away two point eight million dollars in grant money, hundred percent grant money, to put toward a project. Now, we have no idea if you would get a hundred thousand, a million, two point eight million, we don't know who's gonna apply for this. The application is September thirty of two thousand twenty-two. So, that was out today. I don't even know what the application is like, I didn't even download, I don't have time to download it, but there's money out there for something like that. Regardless, like I said, even you guys qualify right now.
That would be on top of the potential for the fifty-fifty match on the, for the remainder, the difference between that two point eight and that six or seven.
Fifty, yes. You can, you can double up those funds, so, best case scenario, one person applies, that's you guys. And so you take two point eight million off the top of an R O treatment system, and then the rest of it, you get fifty-fifty money. So really, you're, you're getting a pretty good chunk of grant money if you would decide to do that, but that is by September thirty, if you decide what we wanna do, if we wanna apply for this.
But that's just for the capital?
Only pays for capital.
Capital outlay, so you still have operation and maintenance every year.
Very?
I said, do the calculation.
Thirteen thousand, a hundred and forty.
Third, yeah. Yeah. And as I said, your source, the reason those are so low is because you have the well now, you pump the well now, you would take wells out there, all you're paying is power really, once you have the pipe and everything in it. And you go check them. But the power you would save, if you don't pump the wells in town, you're pumping the wells out there. You know, there may be a change in horsepower, but not a lot, I mean, they go from fifty to seventy-five, or it's not perfect, it's not, not a huge change. So, treatment, again, this is why treatment is the last option, O N M eats you alive.
How much manpower does it take, like, are we talking like a guy three hours a day on weekends, I mean, is it like a babysitting job?
Yes.
I don't know what it is.
So, I don't remember what I had in the study, but I think I put thirty hours a week for somebody to do it.
So it's a full-time guy essentially?
It, it is, you basically are adding a guy. Because, you have to go through the aisle and test your R O, you have to test on a regular basis for, especially for nitrates, in and out, make sure that we're doing okay. So every day, you check the plant, you check the pumps, you check the equipment, and then you report.
That's in that O N M number though.
What are the certifications they have to have?
So they have to be at least, for your size, I think you have to be at least a grade three operator, and most of them are grade fours, so they have to upgrade, upsize your operator. And for your population, I, I think it switches at fifteen hundred, I have to check that, is it two thousand, thank you. So two thousand would be grade two, so you're looking at a grade three.
What do those cost every year to send those guys to get that?
It, it doesn't cost anything more, once they have the certification, but they have to have so many years' experience, it's like three to five years' experience, from a grade four to a grade three, they have to pass the test.
Yeah.
And then keep your certification up, just like they do for a four, but it is one grade higher.
Did they come from where?
Probably from within. You, you would have to have your guys, Kurt would have to get his license.
No, he wouldn't, he told me he won't.
He's not new at it.
Okay, well, see. There's an issue of treatment.
He will not do that.
Okay.
And then you see, you said that the, on like a R O system, the skins have to be replaced every?
Three years.
Every three years, what's the exact cost?
And that's in that O N M.
Okay.
So we budgeted that, so replacement parts, replacement pumps, things that are like five percent of all your costs, I have all that in that O N M, that's why it's so high.
Yeah.
Because every three years, you pull out all that media and you put it all back, you put in new. And, and that's just.
Another guy.
Yeah, another time, you're paying somebody, you're buying equipment all the time, you're always working on this thing.
And then they're, they're also testing the blend frequently, aren't they, that has to happen now. Creighton had something of a disaster with that three or four years ago, or something like that, and the blend got off and started eating them alive and they had to adjust all that.
Yes, I mean, it's, it's, as you tell, it's a high maintenance thing, it, it takes a lot of money doing these things.
So I used to work for the city of Creighton, none of us in the city office ever drank the water. It had an odor and it had just this really flat taste, was there something unique to Creighton that caused that?
No.
Was it just the way it is?
You, you take a lot of the minerals out, so that flat taste is you, you've eliminated all the minerals, you have just dumped minerals, so it's not corrosive.
Okay.
So you're used to a higher mineral, I mean, we have high solids here, so you're used to higher mineral, it just tastes flat. It's like drinking distilled water, if you ever drink distilled water, it's.
It just, yeah, blah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, and then you have to chlorinate it, that's everything, is if you do treatment, you have to chlorinate.
Right.
So we would have to chlorinate our water supply.
It tastes really horrible.
Well, I mean, I could, I'm used to chlorinated water, but their water is something else.
Your water used to go down.
Sure. So.
Well, you keep saying risk, are you saying we hope we find a place, when the equipment might not work, what is that risk, the other risk?
Yes, so the risk is, and like I said, we've talked about, you have wells out there that have penetrations that are going through this clay lens, it's gonna protect our well. Now, the country club area actually has a lot of shallow wells that aren't into that yet. There's four of them out there in that area that we found, but it's pretty protected. So if we could get down in the deep, it's, it's like Brunswick, Brunswick was a risk to drill that well. When we drilled that well, everybody said, well, there's nitrates around us, you know, is this gonna work, and it's like, yes, I believe it's gonna work, but there's always a risk that you don't know, that clay lens is not uniform. Let's say that it's missing for some reason out there in the geology, we, you don't have enough holes out there to know exactly what's there. But, you put that down deep and you're doing the best you can, if you pump slower, if you don't try and pump it a thousand gallons a minute, you're not trying to pull those nitrates down. So, there's a risk out there, and what we would do is like I said, the next year, we have a year to decide really what we have to do. I think you drill a test hole out there, if we wanna look at a new source, you drill a test hole, you pump it, and every quarter, we go out and take a sample and see what the nitrates do. We put a water level indicator in there and we see what the, the water levels do during irrigation season, if that's truly the direction the council wants to go. And, this is where the rubber hits the road, I mean, I can engineer this thing all you want and it, it's a matter of what are you comfortable with. Some people say, you know what, I, I wanna do a treatment plant, I'm done with this, I'm not gonna worry about it ever again, we're gonna build a plant. But you gotta know that O N M is gonna be expensive and we can't get grant money for O N M. We get grant money for the base, but the operation maintenance is what kills us every time, and that you have to give to your customer every year. So, like I said, we always say treatment's the last option, I, I will tell everybody when I ask that question. If you can avoid it, you can avoid it. Now, not to drill a new well right now and not to build a treatment plant, we go back to your well sixty-two one, looking into geology of this. Looking at what we drilled through and looking how it's constructed, we have a gravel pack that runs all the way from top to bottom. But we have twenty foot plus of what is labeled as a white clay. Now, I don't know when they drilled it sixty-two, what a white clay was, but he labeled it as a white clay. Is it a clay? I hope so. Because, they have done projects and we worked with the university, went out and what they do is they send a tool down here. They pack the top of this and the bottom of this with basically an inflated packer. And they drill holes through the casing, right in here, and they flood that with either cement or bentonite. And they seal from the outside of the casing to where they drilled through and put that gravel pack, and they make that a solid plug. And that stops the water from coming down into our screen down that hole. It is not a cheap option, but it works. Now, Albion, I'm gonna tell you a terrible story, and I'm gonna tell it, but Albion just tried this. They had a well, they had a concrete casing, and it must be really recent, 'cause I talked to the guy that was the driller, but concrete well, they went to drill the holes in it and the thing collapsed and it fell in, it's done. So, they lost the entire well, that does happen. So the first thing, like I said, I'm gonna flip down to this slide. So, we kinda think you would do this if you wanted to go down this route, and we said, this is what we're gonna try first. Before we spend any real amount of money and we get into millions of dollars, let, let's spend less than a new well, let's see what we can do. So, if you did part A, which is everything above here, you have to pull the pump, I would C C T V the inside of that well casing. And I would say, let's look at the casing, do we have any holes in it, how does it look, does it look structurally sound? Because obviously, if we do this, we're gonna put some gravel, we're gonna put some pressure on it, we don't wanna collapse the well. But, you pull the well, you spend about ten thousand bucks pulling the well, pull the pumps, pull everything out of it, C C T V it, if it looks good. The drillers, their casing Albion's was about sixty-five thousand dollars to do this, excuse me, to drill holes, grout it. If it works, we could put our pump back in and we could pump it and we could check it, the nitrates, and see if this works. If it didn't work, we're out to sixty-five thousand. If it didn't seal it and there's somewhere else that's getting water down at the bottom, we're out to sixty-five thousand. But, for that review fees, partner health and stuff, we're looking at about eighty-five thousand bucks, we can see if we can save that well. And so in our opinion, it's probably a, a well, investment well worth it, instead of spending millions of dollars for a new source.
What's a new well's right beside it cost done right?
Five hundred thousand. So you're about a half million right now, maybe four hundred thousand, but for a deep well, they're about five hundred thousand.
Is that one down as far as it goes?
It is, yep, the bottom of that one's a white shale, or a yellow shale, so.
Do you think with the V F D and everything, will you slow the pumping down, that'll help too?
You know, sometimes that works and sometimes that doesn't, I've seen people that use a drive and slow it down, and sometimes you don't pull that down and sometimes you do, it's random. It just matters how, what size of gravel I think and how quickly it gets down to the bottom of the well. I, I, I've seen it work and I've seen it not. Um, but if, if it worked, before you invest any money, you put the old pump back in, I wouldn't renovate, even if the pump shaft looked like it was kinda crappy. You could pull it out and you put the old pump back in and we could pump it and see if this thing works. If it did work and we currently wanted to use it, you probably have to put in a new pump, a new column, we can slow it down, a V F D. So we can renovate it, the inside piping, the electrical in that building probably needs upgraded. I mean, we would spend another big chunk of money, but then we would know that at least we have a viable option before we spent that money. It needs a valve outside, Kurt told me.
Yeah.
Which is fifteen hundred bucks. But, portable generator, if we're gonna use it, we may wanna put a generator. portable generator, if we're gonna use it, we may wanna put a generator on that well, so that way we had two wells with generation. You only have one generator right now, it's on the eighty-nine well, but you would have a backup generator for that well. And we could use it as a portable, I would probably buy a portable well, so that way if you wanted to run to one of the other wells, we could do that. If you did a treatment plant ever in the future, you would have a stationary generator at the plant which could power this well permanently. But again, we're looking long-term down there. Um, so, this has a lot, makes a lot of sense to me. This is less than three hundred thousand dollars if you did the whole thing and you could have two wells. And it could be a semi-permanent long-term solution. But for the first eighty-five thousand, you would know. Now again, the whole purpose of this thing is at the end of this month, we owe the state a PER. If you guys wanna get paid for it, we have to submit it. Then we have one year to put together our final implementation plan, what we really intend to do. So, in my opinion, we have a year to kind of figure out really what we wanna do. But some of these things like this, I think would be worth trying if, if the council would wanna do that. Some of the grants will come back and pick this up too. They call it investigative work, they'll come back and pay for this if we do something else. So. It's kind of, like I said, this is where the rubber really hits the road, is in the next year, the next three to four months, we have to decide if we really wanna do a treatment plant or we wanna try and delay that cost. Every year you delay it, you save hundreds of thousands of dollars in O and M. You could look at a new source. But come September thirtieth, there's an application gonna be out there for anybody that wants to build an RO plant that treats for nitrates. And you guys will be high on that list. There are very few communities left that are treating for nitrates, you will be one of them. Uh, we could sample the country club, that's already in the progress. I think you do that regardless, Kurt knows about it, he's got the well man.
He's on it already.
Yep, he, he's already doing it, we just had the results for tonight. But we wanna see what those wells are around there, those deep wells. If they're low in nitrates, that makes that less risk. How's that?
That's good.
So we have less risk. We, we're down there, we're deep, we see what those deep wells have for nitrates. The, the high ones, I don't care if they have high nitrates, cause there's that clay lens hopefully in all those logs, or we're below. Um. We could proceed with the central treatment plant if we wanted to, or new source, or we could decide we're gonna treat for sixty-two-one right away and try that. But again, I'm telling you as a board, I think you should look at trying to renovate sixty-two before we look at going to a treatment plant. I know we lose an opportunity maybe of the LB ten fourteen. But once you do treatment, you're there forever. And, and from an engineering standpoint, it's, it's easy, I can, I can build you an RO plant, that's not an issue. But from a cost standpoint, your citizens may not like me or you. Cause it, it's an expensive option. And you, like I said, you guys can run after street and talk to Creighton, you can if, if they could get rid of that plant, I think she, she would agree.
Oh, yes. Every council meeting, people would complain about the, the base rate, the base service charge to cover that plant and that the water tastes bad and they don't wanna drink it. There was an odor, I don't know what the odor was, we had pipes.
Um. So, and like I said, and newer plants get better. I mean, that, Creighton's, to defend them, they have the oldest nitrogen plant in Nebraska, it was the first one. That was the first one that went in and it's still operational. So, they work, they last, they can do it, you can maintain it, it's just expensive.
And they hate water.
And, and some people do.
They hate the water. But the guys who run the plant are also paid very, very well, which is a very large, so they make more than the city administrator there, so.
It is.
Well, Jeremy won't let that happen.
I'm not getting a grid through order lessons either.
So, really tonight, we had to, we wanted to present you guys a PER, present your options. We wanna talk about the options, really that's what this is for. We have to finish the rest of this because we need some direction of where we wanna go. It's not an end-all, do-all. We have a year till we have to submit what they call the implementation plan, it really lays out a schedule when we're gonna do something. And that plan in a year, we have to say, we're gonna build a new plant, we're gonna do it in the next three years, we're gonna do this. Right now, we have a year kind of to investigate what we really wanna do. This whole purpose of this study and there's a book that you will all get, you can all read it, that's gonna be about this thick and you're gonna have to go through and it has, really this is the Cliff Notes of what it contains. There's words that go with it. You gotta listen to me babble all night on it, so it's about the same thing. We looked at blending, not an option for you guys. You look at well sixty-two-one renovations, I think that's something to really truly consider. That might be your first option, that might be what the board thinks is first. We can look at a new source. We're gonna do those samples, I think that's the first step, if they come back good, we can come back and talk about, we wanna drill a test hole next year and see what we can do. And see what's out there. I mean, drill a real hole, we'll ELOG it, we will look and see what the formation really is. We test pump it, we take nitrates and we monitor it for a year, eight months or something, then we know when it comes up for implementation plan, if we're really looking for a source. Consolidation, I really don't think is an option for you guys, we had to evaluate it, but I think that's what you wanna do. And then treatment. We can look at treatment if you wanna look at that.
So I will say Kurt Troy did go and tour, tour, go through Creighton's plant and he's more welcome to let any of us go. I know I've talked to Brian and Bob and you're interested and we wanted to kind of wait for this, but they're more than willing to show us what it all is if someone wants to see it.
With the September grant application, if you miss that, you're out.
I believe so. Unless somebody would, unless nobody would claim it, then I don't know if they do, but there, if I, if I remember right, there's about six or seven communities that are still battling nitrates that would be qualified. Like I said, you have to have RO treatment as your solution and you have to have nitrates. Someone asked me why that's the way it's set up, but that's what it is.
What if we had it as a tentative solution and applied for the grant? And they gave it to us and then they said, no, we're not doing it after all.
I don't know.
How bad would they be?
Yeah, well, I, like I said, it was released today.
I think it's kind of a one-time thing, isn't it?
It is, it's, that's.
Yeah, they're right.
They're shedding COVID money.
Yes, that's what it is.
It's a one-time thing, so there's no ding. Like if you were awarded and you politely declined, few, few months later, there's no ding from some agency that's gonna come after you because it's extra.
On the other side of that, if you weren't awarded, you could go then to go to other, other options.
Well, exactly, and if, and besides, but if the RO was half price, that might be a factor.
Yeah. Again, you're getting the capital, but you're still paying.
Yeah, there's still all the other evil things.
I mean, really how feasible is it for the city to, to cover another two hundred thousand dollars a year-ish? You know, on something like that.
I don't think it comes out feasible, I think you've gotta do it eventually. I mean, if that's the solution, it's a solution.
Yeah.
And you gotta drink water.
And it has to come out of your rates.
Yeah, that's.
Your rates are gonna fall.
Is what it is.
You remember the two dollar trash conversation? Yep. Well.
So what can they do tonight? Do you wanna motion for?
So tonight what we have to have is, is a, basically is a motion, I'd like to just talk about, like I said, where the council's opinions and where we wanna go with this. Because we have to write up the, any part of the PER. What is our steps? And it could be a phased approach. I, I, I don't think there's any problem saying, here's how we wanna phase it in over the next year and then we're gonna tell you in the year what our final plan is. I don't think that's an issue. If you agree, I mean, I said, if you agree with us, if you don't agree with us, I just wanna know council's opinion, direction, how we finish the plan.
As a professional, you know the best plan and the best cost. And so your professional opinion is to renovate sixty-two?
I would start with that. A- absolutely, I think that is, it's a lot of money, but it's the lowest cost solution if it works. And even if it buys you five years, I mean, if it bought you five years at two hundred thousand a year in savings, that's a million dollars. Now, I think you would know within the first six months if this thing's gonna work. And then, then you have to know, you'll know at that time, we'll also have samples of the country club and we'll know of new source, cause to me, if you renovate sixty-two-one, then you may have two wells. Then our next phased approach would be, let's look at the country club area if we think that's a viable option. Do we think we have landowners out there that work with this? I mean, those are all real concerns. I mean, citing a well anymore, it gets harder and harder to do. Finding somebody who will allow you to drill a well out there, may not be as easy as it used to be. So everybody's afraid you're stealing water, you're doing this, but we're putting a well out there.
Well, you could still renovate that sixty-two-one well you're talking about and then if you decide to do an RO plant, that would be the one.
That would be the one you could do.
So you've already.
Okay.
And on a grant application, you could s- show that you've already done this, so you might be further ahead than some other tenant, hasn't really quite started the process.
So from a phased approach, sixty-two-one, just the first part of it, your eighty-five thousand, let's see what we have. If it worked, then you could put the rest of the money in to bring it up to speed, more or less. You look at the country club area, we get those initial samples in, it's just a couple hundred bucks. We see what those are like, then we can talk about if we wanna drill a test hole out there. Test hole and water quality, if you do a full new well scan, is gonna run you about fifty thousand dollars. Just tell you right up front, that's about what it costs for a new test hole. We pump it a couple times, we see if the nitrates are low, and at the same time, if the farmers are willing to let us sample their well, we sample their wells too and see how those nitrates look. I want samples around there in that deep aquifer to see what it's like. Cause I'm not sure that the samples that we see on these big maps are sampling those deep wells. They sample the wells that have been there for a while, they're usually the shallow wells. And we can pull samples at the golf course well that's only forty feet deep and we'll see if the nitrates are there.
What it's worth, a friend of mine just a mile and a half east of the country club told me last month his irrigation well out in the middle of the quarter tests real high. His household well, clear down in the southeast corner of the quarter, equally de- deep tests real well.
Yeah.
He, he's only a quarter mile apart, but, but the irrigation well is testing high, probably because it's leaking down.
And it's pumping at a higher rate, so it's pulling the nitrates down. So, I mean, that's what I'm saying, you pump it low, you seal it off. Again, that's why I keep saying, I hate to say it, but there's risk associated with a new source. Because once we build that pipeline in town, it's not good for anything else. But if you construct a well right and we have really good data that looks like it's viable option, it is the most feasible option for this. I hate to be very bad news, but that's, that's really where you guys are at. Is we have nitrates around us, it's, it's undeniable. There may be a solution out there that's a new source that, once you drill the wells and the pipe in, it's good for fifty years. Your wells are good for eighty years.
So you want Courtney to write down, there's a motion to do what you said in the last five minutes, so let's go that way?
We, what we wanna put in the report is, we would like the council, the next, you have an agenda item, I think you have, the next one is, is to authorize the city administrator to sign the PER that you've been presented, that goes in, and submit for funding to the WWA committee. We have to fill out a form that says, this is what we are looking at. And we could pick that as new source, we can pick that as treatment right now. All it is, is setting aside that this is what we think we're doing. Worst case scenario, I think you look at new source, if you guys are in concurrence with that. But we could also, I would list in there a phased approach. We wanna do sixty-two well one first, this is what we're gonna do. We're gonna go till about here and we may end up at a new source. It doesn't have to say we're gonna be there for sure. Or we, the board, maybe I'm all wet, you're all thinking, I wanna build a treatment plant. I'm done with this, I don't wanna deal with it ever again. Then you let us know that and that's what we'll put down. And again, it's gonna change in a year. You may, as many look at this and like I said, if this works, you may have two wells that are viable. And you wouldn't have to do the treatment plant. You wouldn't have to do a new source. I mean, we could drill a new well, I, I guess it was brought up, you could drill a new well instead of sixty, we could just abandon that well and drill one right next to it, but again, it's gonna cost you four hundred thousand dollars to put that hole in the ground.
We don't have the water's good yet either.
We don't, we don't have it to work.
Eighty-five thousand first.
But your only risk is a hundred, kind of find out.
Yes, that's, that's, I know that it's a hundred thousand dollars, but it's cheaper than a new well. That was kind of our point is there's a, there's an approach to this that to me seems logical.
So realistically, we're only gonna spend worst case scenario before, if we had to go to a treatment plant, a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to know that it's in dire need. Cause you spend eighty-five thousand dollars, it didn't work, you spend fifty thousand dollars test well, you find out the water's bad out there, you're only a hundred fifteen thousand dollars in a seven point some million dollar project, which is deadly.
Correct.
Right.
So.
It's the way I see it also, but.
I'm putting up there a pretty easy term for that.
So somebody needs to make a motion to adopt the engineer's recommendation.
I'll make that motion.
Write that down.
Bossy on his birthday, he turned seventy.
And you can, and you can, you know, kind of rewrite what Courtney needs to write.
He needs to write that down.
Any further discussion?
Thank you all for your hard work.
Tyler. Pam. Bob. Motion carries four to zero. Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you everybody, like I said, I, you'll, hey, cause that's when we see you again, so.
You said we'll be getting a book, uh.
Yeah, so we'll finish it up, you guys, you guys can read, you all get, I'll give you guys all books, you can take them home and sit next to your bed if you want. But it's, it's the summary of basically, you got the Cliff Notes of the whole study. It will go through and lay out all these figures, they're in large form, you can read them. But it has also all the backup data, it has all your well logs, it has all your testing, it has everything in there. So it's one, it's basically the bible of your water system right now.
And it's something that's good for your next water operators, if they come on, they can read that and understand your system. I will say everything about this.
And we have to send, we have to send five copies in with this application, I mean, they're out there, we can give you the electronic copy, we can.
You go to university and get these people that's gonna come out and work this?
Yeah, I mean, we, we will set up the, the guy that's gonna drill it, university doesn't do it anymore, but there's a guy that patented this, this drilling process that drills the holes in the casing, he patented, he's the only one that can do it. So, he's got a pretty nice gig.
Yeah.
That's how he can charge sixty-five thousand dollars to do it.
Cause no one else can.
Do it a couple times a year?
Yep.
Vacation months?
And, and then you're gonna get the new play for thank you.
Yeah, that I can't.
Why don't you do it, Karine?
But hopefully, hopefully you don't have to.
That's right.
Yes.
You, you council, all of you have to have jobs, like in Austin, you're the road job.
What, what if the sampling at the golf course won't be hard, cause Kurt's our operator, so.
Yeah, I guess it.
So, we got the man. That's even better, see, this is, this is the, like I said, I think.
They're willing to help out and actually find locations, so.
Courtney, next time you write the agenda, reasonably informing the public of the topic, nobody knows what a purr and a wee whack are.
Oh. Purr is preliminary engineering report?
Really?
Yeah.
How many people in this room know what a purr and a wee whack are?
Oh, I'm sorry. You know, that's a.
Agenda has to reasonably inform the public of what you're gonna vote on.
These aren't reasonable.
That's reasonable.
It's right from the state.
That's right from the state.
You have your legalese and they have their engineeringes.
Everybody's got their.
I wouldn't say reasonably inform an engineer.
You don't have the intelligence of our people.
Number nine, mayor's appointments.
Hold on, you have to do number eight first?
Which voted on it.
We did that perfectly. We whacking it, huh?
Library board, Jody Vachanna, four years, Megan Porter, four years, those are both reappointments. Need a motion and a second to vote?
Make a motion to appoint the two library board members.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, Pam?
Hi.
Bob?
Hi.
Brian?
Hi.
Tyler?
Hi.
Motion carries. Next is planning commission, two years, wouldn't debote. Brian Bowman and Jason Howerson, and those are all reappointments.
Make a motion to appoint the two, uh, appoint the three members of the planning commission?
Second? Pam?
Hi.
Tyler?
Hi.
Bob?
Hi.
Brian?
Hi.
Motion carries. Mayor board, two years, Jenna Robinson replaces Vicki Peterson and Joan Alexander is a reappoint.
Motion to appoint the two members of the mayor board?
Bob?
Hi.
Brian?
Hi.
Tyler?
Hi.
Pam?
Hi.
Motion carries. Number ten, discussion action, reallocation of city sales tax.
What's that?
Right. I will need confirmation from the state then, I will submit that and address and mail that and phone numbers, cause I don't have any of that. If I can get that information, so I can submit.
Just send me email, Julian, and I'll email you back.
Perfect.
Thank you. Number ten, discussion, action, reallocation of city sales tax pool, manor, library and economic development.
So, this is actually, is found in our ordinance, we're supposed to look at it every even, even year, Julian. And so obviously it says in there, if you choose to want to reallocate it anywhere or address it, it will have to go up to the vote of the people. Uh, if it gets voted down, we lose the one percent, we're only down to a half percent, and maybe those are pool funds. Reading here, and this would be a good spot for, I guess, our attorney. Um, so our auditor thought this is something to be good to look at, and make sure we did, but here it says the pool fund shall retain the proceeds a half percent, and then it's, um, it doesn't say it's for just the bond, and so our, our auditor thought it might be different, reading here, we don't believe it is. And so I guess we're just bringing it forward, cause that's what the intended use said it is. So if you choose to reallocate, look at it, we'll have to go for the vote, and otherwise, um, we'll keep it as is currently.
I don't think you could ever lose a sales tax one, so it's inactive.
Absolutely.
It could be rea- it can be allocated into something else, but you can never reabsorb it, I thought.
Yep.
You can.
Yep.
Interesting. I learned something.
Um, cause actually this one has to go up for vote in twenty twenty-eight, the, the half percent again. So it does have a sense that there is an end to it, so the, the ordinance that actually brought this forward is actually only good till twenty twenty-eight, so, uh, we would have to revote to keep it. I guess it's, um, so I guess, yeah.
Remember the reason it sits like it does is the hospital one percent went away when the hospital was there. And they didn't want to drop it, so they cut the one percent into thirds.
Right.
And left the other alone. But any significant change has to be voted on. If you leave it alone, you just leave it alone.
Yep, and we keep it till at least, yeah. Yep. So if you choose to keep it as is, we keep rolling it over, um, obviously, we, our funds are bound, we budget for anywhere between sixty and seventy thousand dollars for the pool fund. Um, that sales tax come in, obviously that fluctuates, our pool costs that, so it will actually essentially help feed the general fund that way currently as it sits. And that's if we don't have any repairs for pool, and that's once our bond's paid off. So, uh, I will give a little hint, we did have.
The pool was put on at the same time as the other three?
I missed what you said.
The pool tax was put on at the same time as the.
No, the pool tax was predated.
No.
The pool was previous.
Predated the three by a long ways.
Yeah, yep. So. Uh, I will give a little prehint, uh, we did have, we didn't, we lost some water right once we filled the pool this year. We went down two foot, our guys mended what they thought the repairs were at, we're kind of going day by day, make sure things hurt, we don't know exactly what the problem is, so we might have some repairs coming next year, fall, we're not for sure yet. Uh, it is, like Kurt said, it is eighteen years old, it's not spring chicken by any means, so. So I'm gonna, I would say definitely for the pool tax, it could, it'd be used appropriately there.
I would beg for you to keep them. I will say when I first started, all we got for our portion of L B eight forty was, I think, thirty thousand, and now we're getting like fifty thousand a year. So we know that like, things that we're doing aren't working, and it's actually generating more money, so, and we're getting payments in, so.
So I guess we're, yeah, so this is for the manor, library and.
Yeah, they all went up because, you know, just.
And a discussion from the council?
Didn't you say it's up for revote, Jerry?
If you guys decide to reallocate the third percents, it will go, it'll have to vote for vote in November.
Beyond that?
Uh, but. No, he means the vote of the people. We'll, we'll bring this to you every, every other June, even, even there. But, uh, the half, the half percent for the pool is up for vote in twenty twenty-eight.
Six point years.
And then I will have to look at what the one percent is up for, I'm not, I'm not for sure when that one's up. Which I'm assuming why this is here, cause this is what you're really talking about, it's the one percent, so if you guys want to change it, then it goes up for vote this year.
And you'd have to decide you want to do that, pass a resolution next month to reallocate, and then they gotta submit all that to the county and set up the vote.
Correct. Which is why it's actually set up to look at it every June in there, so we, it should have been going every even year, we didn't know about till we.
A motion to approve the allocation as it is and go forward and just skip it.
Yeah, I think if you just don't, you just leave it alone, if you choose just to not change anything, we just keep moving forward till two years from June.
Yeah, at least document well in the minutes that it was discussed and considered or something like that.
Make a motion to leave it the same?
One second. Bob?
Hi.
Brian?
Hi.
Uh, Pam?
Hi.
Tyler?
Hi.
Motion passes three to one. Number eleven, discussion, action, interlocal agreement for Pierce County dispatch. It should be for the non-emergency, right?
Yes, this is non-emergency utilities, I just, we finally about finalized it today with Ted, the attorney, and Rick, the sheriff. So we went through and change your agreement, we talked about it at the commission meeting yesterday, which I went to, and, uh, we came out with this agreement in front of you, essentially it's gonna cost about five hundred dollars a month, and that is, except for if we have to do extra telephone lines, um, anything like that inside, like bring like a line into the dispatch center, like go into us or not, which is forty-five bucks a month, just like that.
So the council has seen.
Thank you, appreciate that, guys.
Look at that.
Yeah.
The council has seen the agreement, it was in the packet?
They got it tonight.
They got it tonight, we, they just came in, um, Ted just got it to me. We were a little, a little behind the ball there, but, so we weren't happy to read through it.
That's something we need to talk about a little bit. You know, you're talking about a city contract here. If you look in the Plainview codebook, it says the city attorney shall review and comment on every city contract. Nobody deigned to even tell me it was moving, or give me a copy. Lorberg apologized profusely over the phone today when I called him and asked him if he looked on it, because he recognized that the little light came on in his brain, that he was corresponding directly with another lawyer's client and doing legal work with them, and hadn't even told the other lawyer. Which is an ethics breach of substantial proportion. But I find it hard to believe you went ahead and negotiated all this and distributed it to the council and never sent me a copy. Is there a reason for that?
No, you saw that, and like I said, it happened today, so.
I thought he told me he sent it up last Friday.
You wanna know what he sent up to last Friday? He sent up a copy of Pace and Wayne's, so.
Well, nonetheless, I still didn't get a copy today, except from Ted when I called.
You have one, I gave you one tonight.
Sure.
That's, that's when I got it, was today, so.
When you, the table, the table room gets chance to look at it?
Well, I have looked at it, I looked at it earlier today.
I don't want to have a good chance to look at it.
Got a couple comments for you, but maybe you have thoughts of your own.
Absolutely.
Go ahead, it's a discussion and action. Run on it for a minute? The duration is stated to be until terminated. Do you want that? Do you want it to have a certain duration so that it definitely comes up every once in a while? Future councils probably wouldn't even recognize that it was out there if it just goes forever. Do you want it to be until terminated, or do you want it to be two years and needs to be renewed, or something like that? You can do it either way. That's the question of judgment for the council.
So it can be terminated by either party?
It can be terminated by either party on notice if you read the thing, that's okay, except it just goes forever and maybe never gets looked at. I mean, it says the sheriff gets to administer it, that's fine. There's nothing at all about their obligations as to how fast they respond, or how fast they communicate or notify anybody. You'd have to hope that they've got the good dispatch down there and they do a good job. Would it be prudent to say something about, you know, they will endeavor to pass messages on within ten minutes of receipt, or something like that? Or was that talked about at all?
It says provide continuous answering dispatch services to law enforcement, plain view staff, use a qualified dispatch personnel that are trained to a com- a competent level.
Yeah, but there's no.
These are the same people that are going on nine-one-one dispatch.
Yes, they are.
Do you think they're gonna not?
If I may, if I may, I've been dispatching down there temporarily because they hadn't had any dispatchers. My last, uh, data dispatch was just a couple weeks ago, and I can tell you right now that anytime I got a phone call that required me to contact law enforcement, it was within, the minute I hung up the phone. So, I mean.
So you don't think that's an issue?
I do not think that's an issue. I worked with them, they're very professional.
What about a leaky water pipe? Is that gonna?
So you can use some discretion. Okay, you can, you can use some discretion. If you got a leaky water pipe, am I gonna call somebody at three o'clock in the morning to go out and fix this leaky water pride, pipe? Maybe not, but, I mean, that's something that you can discuss with the city.
Well, that's what I wondered, is if the city wanted to set down some rules or requests or requirements as to how that's going to happen. And who's gonna get called? This says nothing about who gets called. We've had all this confusion over if it's the phone company forwarding stuff, who got it and who didn't? Who are they gonna call? I mean, obviously if it's the police, they're gonna call the police.
With people that are on call.
Even for non-emergency, will they always know who's on call?
Yes.
Yeah, we have.
I don't care.
We send, we fax them a schedule every month.
And how would you then notify them of the city people to?
We have a schedule for on-call for the city.
And you would send them that too?
But.
Yeah, well, how would you put somebody's name here, cause if they trade on calls, it wouldn't work out, I mean.
And then they would have to call a cell phone number, or who would they call?
Yes, yep, they all have city issued cell phones.
And you would provide them with all that?
Yep, it's a city issued cell phone.
It doesn't say any of this, so it's kind of hard to know for sure. Does that make sense to everybody? I mean, if all this can be provided and kept up. The, the hold harmless clause is kind of kooky at the end, I guess Lorberg wrote it, I don't care. It says each party will hold the other harmless from any and all liability. Any and all. So Pierce is liable for something, we hold them harmless, but then we'd be liable for it, so they hold us harmless. But then they'd be liable for it. Usually you say hold harmless from the activity of the other party, not from any and all. That's odd. I guess I don't care, cause there's very little chance of liability over water leak or dog or something.
Well, if, if you guys want to bring it back in July, that's, we can definitely do that, that's not a, not a big deal.
We're not in a hurry for it.
No, we need to.
I want to talk to Chris about it.
We'll, we'll just, we'll just change some dates, and I'll talk to him, um, they have a meeting on the twenty-seventh, which is Wednesday, twenty-seventh. Um, they can go over, if you have any changes you want to make, we'll just tell them a month behind.
One, one other thing to consider as far as to get to wind up my thought of comments, I mean, I've only spent half an hour on this, cause I got it mid-afternoon. But there's long distance phone involved in both directions, quite a bit. You know, the, the city would provide the phone company two numbers. I mean, there's, there's the police non-emergency number, and then there's some city number.
We've got like fifteen city numbers.
But they'd have to have, the citizens would have to have a number to call.
They could still probably call it up.
So currently what's going on is the Plainview telco, Plainview telco, Pierce telephone company is looking into it, they have to look if they want a designated line in there, or if they want to work something out in there, and that's, we don't have that choice, that is, that is gonna be up to Rick and the telephone company, what they can make work in their.
Well, if the, but if you're not gonna make Plainview citizens pay a long distance phone call to call in their.
Oh, that way, we, we, so the thirty-four hundred would like forward it to the Pierce one, so the city would be paying.
Would, so the city would cover the long distance to call it in to Pierce?
Correct.
And then, has the county recognized that they would have long distance to call it back? I mean, it's a lot more than nine-one-one calls if you're dealing with every dog at large and water leak. I guess that's not our problem.
They, they're aware of, yeah, they accept that.
I get so many.
Okay.
I get, you know, we're discussing, I say we, sheriff's office, uh, Pierce PD and myself are discussing how many phone calls does Pierce County or Pierce get compared to Plainview? And I can tell you that we get an astronomical amount of phone calls over what Pierce gets. So, I mean.
Do you have a cause for that?
Do I have a cause for that?
Why we get more?
I have no idea.
You have a thought?
No clue, probably cause, I mean, it's Plainview, I don't know, honestly. I just, I really don't know.
There'd be a substantial volume increase of calls from the office back to Plainview. Looking for the water guy, or looking for the dog guy, or whatever.
Utilities are very minimal.
But I guess that's Pierce's problem until they figure it out. I wonder if they won't figure it out pretty fast if it turns out to be two hundred calls a month.
So, here, uh, so currently Pierce, the city of Pierce is in this agreement, and they pay three fifty, and so they expect to raise them up too, and so they, they have definitely adequate enough money to compensate for.
There's no question it's cheap at this kind of level.
Yeah.
If, if all the other details work. Well, if you're gonna table it, no matter, but council needs to look those issues over and think about it.
I would, I would just ask that i- if it's even possible to do this as soon as possible, I mean, I know there's some things that we need to work out and table and do all that, but this voice messaging system that we have is just ridiculous. It, it's, I don't want to say garbage, but I mean, it doesn't do the people a good service. Especially if I'm not getting the message until two or three hours after, you know, the, um, they, they call the message.
Phone company will tell you they can solve that if somebody will explain the problem to them.
We have told them, we've t- we've told them, I don't know how many times, they just can't find the problem. It'll go to, it goes to my email. If it doesn't hit my primary, it hits my social, it hits my junk, it hits my promotion, uh, my, what are those, promotion, I think, I can look at it right here.
Google.
Yeah, so I have to check all of my, I mean, oh my god, I have to, to two seconds to check all my inboxes, but it should go to my primary, and I shouldn't have to worry about checking all the other boxes when you guys call the thirty-four hundred number. Just my thoughts on it. Cause I'm the one that's responding, I'm the one that's getting the backlash, why haven't you called me back, or why haven't you come over? You know, and my gosh, I really hate telling you this, but it's been, you know, a while since I got the, the voicemail, so. And it's not all of them, but it's a good majority of them.
Number twelve, discussion, action, weight increase for completion of grade L wastewater license.
So I brought this up, you know, we talked about this through the last budget, couple budget seasons and everything, and it's kind of one of our, I guess, things when we talk to our employees, like when I, like when I hired Chris. He, we said he owed us two licenses potentially for, for the starting, and he did that, and then we have a third one, so we actually sent Russ and Chris both to wastewater class, and they both passed, and now we are lucky enough to have our entire staff fully water certified, fully sewer certified, um, which really puts us in a, in a safe position if we have any retirements, illnesses, sicknesses. It's a real big benefit and a rarity. Um, so, it's something we've, I, we've brought up, we've talked about it, and I guess, and when we first initiated, we said something like a dollar for a license, and that's why I guess I'm gonna propose tonight for our two people who, um, pass their wastewater license. Uh, they, it, it comes with a lot of responsibility, they are continuing education, they have to go through G H S, they have to certify all these things, I mean, their, their name's able to go on things that, if we need to, so, um, I don't know what we're gonna do with obviously raises in budgets this year for, for raises with inflation, maybe, but this is something that, like I said, I know we talked about earlier in the past years about extra licenses, and I think it's a good incentive for, for our guys to, I mean, if there's no incentive to put more workload on you, what, what, what do you have?
Well, you know, we have good employees that want to do it too.
Yeah, and honestly, um, those are our two younger guys, if, if we do go down the road of bad luck, and we have to spend money on harmless systems, we want to keep those guys around and put them through more classes if we can, if they want to, you know? Like I said, I know the ethanol plant is running paper, their minimum wage is twenty-two bucks an hour now. Uh, we, we don't want to lose our guys either, I mean, they're, we're, we're well below that yet, so. Like I said, well, that's something to think about too during budget season, about where to put people at and be competitive in marketplaces as well, so.
So this is Russ and you?
Russ and Chris, yep, uh, Troy and, um, Kurt already have theirs, so, so we have, so we are fully staffed of everyone being able to.
They all have their grade L?
Yes, that's our, that's our, that's our sewer system, and we have. Um, there's different grades, like you, you can have obviously mechanical sewer plants and everything, but that's all we're required to have.
That's all we're required to have?
Yep, yep.
So they're getting what now, and where do you want to go to?
I do, yeah, for sure.
Oh, okay.
Look at Nico. Um, so currently when I first, when I first, um, talked to him about it, when we first made negotiation or discussed it, we set a dollar an hour for, for each license they get, so if they end up going and getting, you know, another license we have, they do mosquitoes, whatever, that'd be, that was an incentive, so. I don't know where we're going at for, like I said, wages come budget season, if we want to put them at, you know, a higher rate to be competitive, whatever, but at least this is something that we, it's what we talked about and what I'm, what I'm driving for anyway, so.
So you already told them, if you get a license, you get a dollar more an hour?
No, I did not promise that, no.
You, but you told them you could.
That's what I said, that's why I said that we'd shoot for, and we talked about it budget season beforehand.
Are you shooting?
Yes, I am, I'm shooting for a dollar, that's why, oh, I thought you said that.
I didn't hear it about.
Sorry, sorry, yes.
So we have a.
Does that make sense?
Proposal.
I thought you were gonna get the dollar more.
Oh.
Yeah?
Yeah, sorry.
Sorry, I do have that. So currently, Russ makes nineteen sixty-seven an hour, and Chris makes eighteen thirty-nine an hour. So that put him up to obviously nineteen thirty-nine and twenty-sixty-seven. So how many you get percentages? So how many you get percentages?
Uh, that's right. Um, I don't think a motion to do a wage increase for a dollar a piece an hour due to the, uh, grade L wastewater license.
Second second, Dan. Any further discussion? Pam?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion carries four o. Thirteen, discussion action, text my gov, mass messaging system.
Okay, so I have been looking at, when I started six years ago, there was really no way to reach people, I took time three years ago to get phone numbers, and we had a mass calling system through Plainview telephone. Um, we could send out for snow emergencies and things like that, and you'd get a phone call and a message. Uh, when they did their upgrade, it wiped that system out and they no longer have it, so all that is no longer in existence. So I've looked at other things to, um, not everybody's on Facebook, not everybody uses the internet, so we can't rely on that to get out, you know, if we need to get things out in a short notice to people. Um, I looked at one, it was okay, but it was kinda pricey. Um, this one relies solely on text messaging, which most people today do text message. So we could send messages out to them, but they could also type a message to a number and it would give them feedback, like if they asked, what are your hours, it would automatically give them a response. Because I can't tell you how many times I look on Facebook, someone's like, what are the hours for this? You can't rely on someone to answer your questions twenty-four seven on an exchange site as to what, what things are. It would link right to our website, so anything on our website, they could pull that up if they asked them basically keywords. So anything with a keyword in there, um, you know, festivals, rates, um, you know, housing, those kinds of things, it would direct them right to our website where they could go to look for it through this text messaging system. They could also report complaints, so this goes right along with the dispatch thing, but if they wanted to say, report, there's a pothole, there's a water main break, they could type that in and pinpoint exactly where that is at. Take a picture of it, send it, and it would go to whoever is on call. They could see exactly where that's at at a moment's time instead of, well, there's a water main leak and we have to drag those in and look at it. They could take a picture and show you. So I mean, it, to me, it would cut down on a lot of confusion on sometimes things that are being reported. It'd be a lot quicker, it would cut down on some phone calls that we get that are maybe not necessary. I, if you guys don't wanna do it, I know it's kind of a cost, but I thought it was something that we should maybe look at, especially for, you know, emergency things that we have to get notices out there to people. You know, I can't rely on word of mouth, a lot of people say I didn't hear about it, you know, they don't, but you don't have, and you can subscribe to just certain things you wanna receive notifications on, so you don't have to receive all of them. So if you don't wanna receive every notification we send out, you just pick which ones you want. If you just wanted for snow emergency, that's all you would get notified about. You wouldn't get notified if we put out that clown days was tomorrow, you wouldn't get that notification. It's totally in your control on this kinda thing, so, um, he did, he did give me kind of a little walkthrough one day when I went through with them, it's very user friendly. And I, there's, to me, it's, there's no app to download, if you can text, you can use it. So the other one I looked at, you had to download an app, this one you don't. You have text messaging, you can use it. So, um, I kinda gave you just like his little proposal there, what it is, what it costs. He did give me that, um, he would give me a little bit of a discount on the price if we committed to it by the end of June, but we would not pay anything until I knew fiscal year in October. So we could budget it in, we'd essentially get three months for free. You'd get July, August and September for free. If you don't wanna do it, that's fine, we would just not get that discount. You know, if you don't wanna commit at this time, if you wanna look into it further, that's totally fine, I'm just bringing it to your attention. I know other communities in Nebraska are looking at, I know Osmond looked at it, um, Hemingford, which is smaller than us, just signed on for this program. Lincoln is looking at this program, so I mean, it's, it's kinda growing in Nebraska, so it's not.
Their, their contract suggests they could send things directly to a department or submit a work order. You don't want that, do you?
No, but I mean.
Everybody in town can communicate directly to the water department and say, get down to my basement?
No, it would go to, it would, I mean, it would be, whoever it would go to, our water department's one person.
But it wouldn't come back to the office and then you give them the order?
But you could log all, no, you could log all this though, you can track everything that goes through there. You can go on the website and track everything that's been done, so if somebody says, you never responded to my message, it would be tracked on their website saying this is done.
It struck me in reading this that it kind of duplicates the call Pierce for dispatch thing, except now you got one more thing to check and see where your orders are coming from. Is it, are you, you're not gonna let citizens make work orders, are you?
They do right now.
Saying that all over here. No, they call with a question.
They call with a, they call something they want looked at, that's, then we make a work order off of that. So they would call in and say, hey, I have a water leak at my house, they do the same thing right now, they call the office and say, I think I have a water leak because I have water coming out of the street.
Call the office, well, that was my point.
Yep.
Is this supposed to be the contract, or is there a contract to the offering?
This is what he sent me. Um, if we would commit to it by the end of June, then we would get the discount, if we don't, we would go with the regular price.
They have a real contractor, is this it?
This is the agreement confirmation that he sent me on the back. Like I said, if you guys don't wanna do it, we don't have to, I'm just bringing it to your attention. I am, I am fine with not going with it, if you wanna think about it more, that's fine.
Well, that was the only questions I had, I mean, it says you can regulate how departments are contacted. I don't think you want citizen number three sending dog complaints and water repair orders out to anybody. Okay, well, as long as you have that.
I think, I think her purpose, correct from wrong, maybe, maybe the whole water utilities that was a bad deal, or not maybe the best example, but things like, oh man, excuse me, things like our water notices, any issues, like if you have a water main break, saying, so like, we can tell people if you have a water main break that their water could have problems, like.
It really is sent out to the public, that's kind of.
It's sent out, yeah, that's what I think her main purpose was talking about.
And you can regulate what departments are contacted, I think, they say you can control it. I would think you would want to control it, is my point.
But the citizens are not, they're not just messaging Kurt directly, it's coming to a centralized number.
Well, it's what this thing said, but I think you can limit it if you.
Yes, you, you can put all your restrictions on here you want. I mean, it just, there's a lot of different options as to what you can message about. And the fact that you can, you can tie it to your website, so they can, it'll point, pinpoint them to their website to look at things instead of them searching around for things, so. I mean, I'm all for getting people the information that they want. I mean, and a lot of times people, I don't know why, but two in the morning is the time they think they need an answer on something, and I don't know. I'm sleeping, but, um, you know, I, I just, again, I'm not, I'm not sold on it, I mean, if you guys don't wanna do it, that's fine, I'm just bringing it to your attention, I've looked at different options. The call system thing was great, it took forever to get it set up, and I was kinda mad when it went away, because we spent a lot of time in putting numbers and getting that all set up, so. And it's not, those are not ideal, because if you're not home to answer your phone, you don't get the message. So this, if you have your phone, you get the text message, so if you're in Norfolk and we say there's a snow emergency, you're still gonna know. So, you know, people say, I work out of town, you're still gonna know that this is going on in town, um, even if you're not at your house. I think that helps a lot too, because not everybody is in town twenty-four seven.
Is this something that the citizens have to sign up?
Um.
You can just send it to them, can you?
I think you have to like provide them with, you give them the number they would text into essentially, which would be just, it's like the five-digit codes or whatever that you get for some text messaging things, but it would just be for our city. So they would just, you just give them that number and say, this is Plainview's number. You set this up basically as the number you're gonna text, and then it would come from that, you know, come from that number essentially, so. They don't, they don't necessarily have to sign up for it, they don't want to, I mean, it's one of those things, you don't have to be, you don't have to be in it, you don't have to get all the notifications if you don't want to. Um, if you guys want to, um, table it and look into it further, that's fine, they have a website that kinda explains a lot of their stuff, that's, I mean, I want you guys to, if you want me to set up a Zoom with the guy I talked to, so he can kinda run you through it, that's fine too. I mean, I guys, I want you guys to be comfortable with it before we go forward with it, I just think, you know, we spent money on upgrading our website, it'd be nice to utilize something that would even help people use our website even a little bit better too. So, I mean, we get a lot of phone calls that probably don't need to be phone calls in my, in my opinion, I mean, just the most random of questions, so, um.
Courtney, are you saying right now if you did have a snow emergency that we don't, you don't have capabilities?
I can put it on Facebook and the website, but I would have to physically call every single person one by one to tell them, or go hang signs around town. I don't have a mass messaging system to let the citizens know.
So if the media got changed, you could send it out, change in media time?
Right. Yes, I mean, it's just, it's more, I, more and more today people want things now, I mean, they don't wanna wait for their stuff, so. Um, I'm trying to find the best way to do that, that's not quite so, I mean, I don't, I don't wanna make people download an app to get information. You know, to me, it's, it's texting is not quite as, if you're working, you see a text, you don't have to answer it, you can just see it on your phone and go, okay, there's a snow emergency. Continue on with my day and, you know, be done with it, you don't have to answer the phone and listen to the message, so.
Do you think it's cost effective?
Do I? Yeah.
Well. I, I, I think the, the point of it is, is a great idea. I mean, definitely communication, anytime you do communication is wonderful. But the, the issues I have, which it's only, so, so explain this to me, we'd be paying three grand a year?
Nope, um, your first year would be, um, three, that includes your setup costs and your initial package, and then it's two thousand a year after that.
So it would be three grand a year starting in October?
Mm-hmm, so you could be able to budget it in for the new year.
Okay, 'cause, 'cause that's the issues I have, is we keep on spending money. I've talked about this many times, when we just bought a street, so, um, now we're gonna spend three thousand on this, uh, five hundred dollars more for that, which, again, I'm not disagreeing, it's not needed, it just, we keep on spending money. You know, what's next month? So, yeah, I say, there's always something.
So like I said, if you guys don't want to because of the cost or whatever, I'm totally fine with it, um, I was just bringing it to your attention.
I'm not acting like three thousand is a lot of money, I'm not acting like three thousand.
One hundred thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars. So they, if there's a lot of texts, then they're gonna charge us more money.
It's twenty-five thousand texts a year?
Yeah.
I don't know what that is, or.
Everybody in Plainview would send you two texts.
Is that what it is?
Well, if we have one thousand, two hundred and eighty-three people.
No, twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand.
Thousand, yeah, so.
Well, we have a lot of room.
So if you guys, I mean, if you guys want to table it, we can come back to it some other time, that's fine.
I mean, why, why is he, why is he saying end of June just to try and get us to bite on it?
Three months for free, right?
That's their, I think that's the end of their, kinda their the promotion, the promotion is the end of June.
Totally, we won't do it unless we get that, if we wait till July, I mean.
You're still not paying anything, I mean, you're not gonna pay anything till October, so, um, and if you guys don't wanna do it, that's fine too, I, it doesn't bug me.
But right now you're saying if there's an emerg- a snow emergency, we would find out how?
Facebook.
I hope not in June.
Just Facebook.
Facebook and the website, that's literally.
Okay, this winner.
A tornado, you'd go out on your way there.
Well, and the thing about, you have to look at Facebook, you can look on the city website and see how many people are on the city's Facebook page, and it's only like four or five hundred people.
But just bringing up the whole tornado thing, if there was something that happened in our city, a tornado came through town, God forbid that would happen, if we needed to set up something for our citizens to go for shelter or help with whatever, she could send out a mass text to everybody and everybody would get it. Or if there was something going on on the west part of town, where Christie didn't want people to go to the west part of town, you could send out a text that said, we have a heavy losing presence, and then everybody go there.
Then everyone would go to the west side of town.
But I'm just saying, other cities use that to tell people to stay away.
Then what if, what if the cell service drops?
Well. Facebook's not gonna work either.
Totally, I, I get what you guys are saying on the probability, I mean, it's a very good thing.
I wish the phone company would provide us with something like that, I don't know why they don't.
Well, they did, I think.
Yeah, we, I mean, we have like a mass leak thing and it was fine, but it's, you can't even get it anymore, it's Plainview telephone, so that's not an option anymore, um.
Business of a magazine can ask for texts and going out. All you need is the phone numbers, right? I mean, these people provide a computer program, but a person could just make a great big long text list with every phone number you got.
You, you, you actually go into the site when you get registered and you would have to enter in phone number.
If you buy their site, yeah.
Yep, yep, so like if we had it, we would have an administrator for the site that could go in and put these mess, or you'd put the numbers in, so you could send just a mass text to whoever had provided you with their number, just like your calling system. If your number wasn't in that calling system, you weren't getting a phone call.
But I could also sit here in twenty minutes and type all those numbers in my phone and send them all a text.
Couldn't, could we do that with the Plainview website? Put people's, put people's phone numbers in there if they want them in there? Send a mass text from that, or?
I mean, as far as sending it out, this, this, this outfit system is more geared, I think, or half geared to incoming. Get messages to the city, that'd be a utility of it.
Well, if we're not out, ponder, just to ponder on it. But if somebody else is against that, um, like I said, it's a great thing. Know it's not that much money, but yet. Last my motion is to table it.
So we have a motion on the floor to table, and second to table the, um, text my gov until next month. All in favor of Tyler?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Bob?
Pam?
Motion passes for reserve. Number fourteen, discussion action, NAHTF amended budget request, LB eight forty funds added six ten twenty.
Who wants to free dance for money now? Y'all are getting tired of saltine.
Yeah, this is.
Always want money.
Well, the beauty of this, I have the money, I just need you to let me use it. There's a difference. Oh, well, good, motion that, he said yes.
Oh, we have an issue, we won't stay gone, oh, we'd get out of here.
All right, everybody, we're gonna talk about the.
Thanks.
You bet, keep moving, Brian.
All right, so as you know, back in March, we submitted an application for eighty-one thousand, four hundred eighty-seven dollars additional grant money that the state was offering to help offset the cost of the four flex project, because COVID-nineteen just, all supply issues and the, the, um, materials have just gotten really out of whack. So we have been waiting to hear, and we did finally hear on Friday from our DED rep, um, from Plainview, and she said that our application was under review and that the DED was offering two options to us. The current project for the four units, two of them are what we call income qualified, and two of them are unattached. Income qualified units mean that those are the ones where you can only make a certain amount of money in order to live there. And the rent is capped at eight hundred and sixty-four dollars a month without utilities, or a thousand and sixty-four with. It's almost impossible to provide utilities for that, for ten sixty-four, for a fifteen hundred square foot home, two bedroom, you know, two baths, so. That is what we're looking at. So when we wrote this grant in the original plan to DED, we said two units of income qualified and two would be free, because that is the only way that this project cash flowed. And the DED requires this project to cash flow by one point one seven percent in year one. So at that level, two units, ten sixty-four, two units at fifteen hundred is which, is what the developer's gonna charge for the other two. The, the project makes thirty thousand a year, but the annual operating is twenty-two thousand a year. So it's a tight margin, there's not a lot of wiggle room. What the DED came back with was, and mind you, our project went from nine hundred and eight thousand dollars to one point two six five million, okay? The DED came back and said, well, if you keep your project as is with just the two units qualified and two free, we're gonna give you seventeen thousand, nine hundred dollars to cover the shortfall between nine hundred and eight thousand and one point two six five. And if you, but if you give us a third unit, if you income qualify a third unit at that eight sixty-four a month or ten sixty-four a month, we'll give you the full eighty-one thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars. Great, but we're still short a hundred and sixty thousand. So, I pulled LB, LB, I talked to the investor, I pulled LB forty together on Monday, and they looked through all of this, have the weekend to look at the pro forma and kinda make sure this, you know, kind of look things over. But I've talked to the investor and this is what he has agreed to do. He will income qualify that third unit to receive the full grant. He will income qualify that third unit to receive the full grant, that allows the city to maximize the full grant money. Um, if LB eight forty could contribute forty-three thousand, five hundred and thirty-six to the project, the shortfall then changes from a hundred and sixty thousand to a hundred and sixteen four, um, which he would cover by adding it to his commit, long-term conventional loan or his equity. Um, so the unattached unit rent was to be fifteen hundred a month, generating three thousand a month or thirty-six thousand a year with those two units. The lost revenue over the ten years by committing that additional unit is a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, because you have to be in this thing for ten years before you can get out from the grant stipulations and start charging whatever you want. So the lost revenue there is a hundred and eighty thousand, so that is to be offset by the eighty-one forty, thirty-six coming from DED and hopefully the forty-three, five thirty-six from LB eight forty. The net loss for the investor on that ten years on that one unit is still fifty-four thousand, nine seventy-seven, even if we do all of this, he's still absorbing a loss. So the changes to the project, you'll see at the bottom here, the original project cost nine oh eight, current one point two six five, the original conventional loan was only a hundred and forty thousand dollars at three and a half percent for twenty years. So that was a hundred and ninety-four thousand, eight hundred sixty-six dollars in twenty years. That had to get converted, it, because the price went up, the owner compromised and threw more money into the project, so he went, he raised the conventional loan to two twenty-five, interest rates have gone up at the bank, that three and a half is, is a thing of the past. And four and a half, right now, we can't get, it's, we're probably gonna be looking at five and a half when we can actually start building this thing, but it was at four and a half when we submitted in March at thirty years, so he increased the mortgage by another ten, so his contribution then for the, just changing that conventional loan is five hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars, six sixty-five, a difference of three hundred and twenty-eight, seven nine nine, he's committed to that. On top of that, the owner equity from the original project, the match funds that you had to provide was two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, he's now increased that to four hundred and forty, nine nine seven. Um, and so he's kind of gone from his original investment for this project at nine hundred eight thousand was four hundred and nineteen, and he was gonna get four twenty-seven from the state, you know, it was really close to fifty, a little bit more, you know, in their, in, uh, the state's favor, but now he's committing seven hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars upfront for a one point two six five million dollar project, he get five hundred and eight, nine from the state, and, you know, eighty-six thousand dollars in, in other funding, so. The Plainview LB forty board, you know, it was a hard discussion, we hate to do that because it's a lot of money, um, but after looking over the pro forma and you've got everything here, they decided that the city of Plainview is the applicant for the project, we've been in this thing for three years. Um, there's a benefit to the city in terms of new housing, additional property taxes on a one point two million dollar project. The project does help develop the area north of town, the LB forty board is acknowledging the investors committed to this project and the future development. Originally, where this project is going, he was only gonna purchase like that half lot, he ended up purchasing the whole lot for thirty-five thousand and absorbing the cost of it, not rolling it into this project, because his plan was to build the four units on front with state assistance, build four units on the back, just his own, and then adding two duplexes. So twelve units, twelve rental units is what we would realize if we can help get these four going, these first four. Um, the other thing is, there are no other investors or builders who are flocking to Plainview to build housing, it's just not happening. We have offered marketing, we've offered incentives, I've even joined the Norfolk Realtors Club, Darren's ultimately invited me to that, I've gone to a couple meetings, I've tried to network with some, and they just do not believe, these developers from Columbus, Lincoln, Omaha, Norfolk, do not believe small town Nebraska is worth a, even a shot. Even if I gave them free land and a zero percent short-term construction loan using our LB, or our USDA money, they were not interested in any of those things. Um, and so LB forty said, you know, in order to continue moving forward and advance that area, they did agree to do this, um, our population is increasing, the, the largest population in Plainview is age nine and under, it tells us that we've been pretty successful at bringing back those alumni or young families, um, we get phone call, I get phone calls every week, people are looking for rental units, they're looking for houses, I can look on our PCD website at the statistics and where people are going on our website, and they're going straight for housing. Like, that, that tab gets hit more than anything else, so we do have an issue. And so what we're asking for is forty-three, five thirty-six from LB forty to inject into this project, um, the money would not come out for at least a year, we, it's too late to get a contractor on the schedule for this year, this summer, this fall is gone, it's gonna be next spring, and the way this project works is, is the investor has to spend all of his money, so his seven hundred and some thousand dollars has to be injected into the project first, then our money, and then the grant kicks in. So we're looking at late twenty twenty-three, early twenty twenty-four, so it's not gonna leave our account immediately, but it would be committed. Um, and I think he's, he's done a lot, and this is the compromise, and the state, they feel like they're compromising, but we're still, it's not enough, but this is all they're willing to give, so, that's what's before you tonight. Questions?
The conventional loan, that's still a liability of the owner, the investor.
Correct. Yes, it is.
And is there a contract for the million two sixty-five?
We have not sent a contract yet because the prices were going upside down, we've redid this project four times, we've changed the scope, we've gone through NDEE, they had a pre-approval.
That's still a moving target.
Still a moving target, but if we can get this finalized, he is willing to cover the shortfall, absorb the lost revenue over ten years, and this interest rate on the conventional loan, which is a lot.
My point is, if you tie it down, you need that contract, somebody needs to commit to the million two, or it'll move again.
We cannot do a contract per the state until these, these are agreed on, and we meet on Thursday.
Yeah, yeah, I, I understand.
We get on Thursday with the state, and we'll tell them this is what we're doing at that point, yes.
If you have to hustle right back and get that contract, or it'll blow on you again.
I think the investor is aware that the, there, this is the maximum amount of money that we can contribute, there's no more, and we can't, we as a city cannot do any more than we've already done, so.
The lumber's gone down, maybe it'll go down in price now.
Well, we can only hope, but other things have gone up, so.
I think we need to do this, just, first of all, not just spend money.
Tyler, when you made that last part, I was like, shoot, I don't wanna go now.
But, uh, I, I mean, to show that other investors that we're willing to.
Make an investment in our town.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
How much does LB eight forty have on hand?
About this.
Eight thousand, well, there's eighty thousand in there, but we previously committed thirty-five thousand in the original application back in twenty twenty, so that's there, and now you're committing another forty-three.
And the group's on board.
Yep.
And, and it wasn't done lightly, I mean, they really discussed it.
Right, that's why.
You're, you're gonna recoup your money though, because you're gonna keep getting your sales tax money back, so by the time this is gonna go out of the account, you'll have another fifty back in there probably, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're hoping that hundred twenty by the time it's been eighty-nine.
Right, we'll be okay, and we still have our USDA grant funds, if someone did come along and wanted a business loan, we can still use our USDA funding. Um, the, the two projects that are happening in the town right now, the hardware store and the coffee shop franchise is all going through SBA, so we're not working with the city funding at all, so. I, I think no one's knocked on our door for business loan for a while, I've had a buildings anyway, so, you know.
I don't, don't see a problem with the, with doing this, I'll make a motion. Which one, number fourteen?
Number fourteen.
Number fourteen, uh, NAHTF, HTF, amended budget request, LB eight forty funds.
Second. Second, okay, Pam?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion passes for zero.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Number fifteen, discussion action, approval of road closure, Lincoln Avenue between Pine and Second Street added six thirteen for the Maynard CHI Fourth of July celebration from five to ten P M.
I just put it on there so you guys could approve that it's okay to close that road for what she talked about tonight, on the twenty ninth.
We're here, yup, we're gonna say, I'll make a motion to approve the road closure from Lincoln Avenue.
Did they, did they? I thought she said that was June twenty ninth.
But when I put on our fireworks rain date, it wasn't that, it was like, yeah, it was, I told you June twenty ninth, is that?
Bob?
Aye.
Pam? Tyler?
Bob, aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Motion carries for zero, number sixteen, constant comments, Bob?
Okay.
Pam? Tyler?
Housing stuff, uh, Bob, for the listed properties, are we still the one on that?
That's what he asked, uh.
I, I.
I, I, I was generous here.
I know, and I, I'm sorry, I don't have an answer for you, I just don't.
Okay. Okay, I do.
Our meeting this past month, that was the only.
Yeah, 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 he called me.
I thought he might, I, I thought that would at least get it rolling.
Most of my likes come.
Okay, good.
So, alright, that's all I had, just cleaning that up where.
You guys can help me shoot some rumors down, you've all seen the law for sale sign on the Watson building, because Al Raji is a, there's, I can't say the flight company, but, uh, he's gotten his accident price twice and has backed out at the last minute, and that is now listed with the Realtor, which he will lose more money than he would have gotten by selling it to us for our hardware store, so the hardware store, we are, uh, looking at a new build, new construction, so it is still being planned on, it is still in the works. Um, it's just, they're not gonna be at Watson's, so. He yanked us around for a year, we're upset with him, so.
Brian?
Put him on the LB two fifty-six list, but slap him in the spine.
Motion to.
Yeah, thanks for saying.
Second, all in favor of the last, closing.
Brian.